All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tree County Board of Supervisors on November 5th, 2019. We won't be here on the 11th, obviously, but for those of you in the audience and on the board, our staff, happy Veterans Day. We hope to have a resolution proclaiming November Veterans Month, so, for next meeting. In the meantime, Supervisor Chadwick will lead us in pledge allegiance. Please stand and join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Moving on to public comments, this time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. All right. Oh, all right. Good morning, Diane.
Good morning. So, not to repeat myself, but, and I'm not going to, but what about, for the Garvey-Golch matter, what about goats? Goats would be rather perfect for that, and it's a potential torch, and it needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent. Here is the... No. I think I'll be there because I was on that goat phone call. The goat phone. So, we asked about this a couple of meetings ago when it was raised, so Jeremy and Richard could look into that with Rex to see what clearing will be done in that Garvey-Golch in general, in addition to goats. Okay, thank you. Good morning. Kate Graves from Austin. So, several weeks back, probably more like a month back, I was asked to give the board the transcripts from Peeney versus Finley for two of the days, and I did. I also gave you a letter I received from the State Attorney General's Office, California Department of Justice, stating that it's the district attorney's primary duty to enforce state law, but it's also the board, and you guys are mentioned in that, too, specifically, who I guess would be my supervisor for District One. So, now that you've been given the transcripts, now that you've seen that your elections officer admitted to counterfeit ballots repeatedly and went into great detail about it, I'm wondering what the board is going to do on it now that they've been given evidence of a crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment?
Hello, I'm Dr. Tammy Douglas-City. I've got a problem. So, the taxes were mailed out for our property taxes, and it's dated October the 24th when the tax bill comes in. It was, I got it on Tuesday, last Tuesday, and it was due on November 1st, okay, which gives me a couple of days. Now, on here, on my tax bill, it says, "Important messages." The original bill date was 9/23/2018. Okay, I didn't get that. I didn't take it to Facebook. I took it to real people, talking to people at the post office, my dentist's office, the bank, neighbors. Nobody got one even. Okay, now, that's not right. That gives us undue stress because it's a big tax bill. I have done a lot of cleanup at the barn, a lot. So, my tax bill is over double, okay, amount of $3,152 that I've got to come up with in a couple of days. I've got one of those personalities, my bills must be paid on time. So, this gives me a lot of stress. Yes, I see where it says, I have until December, it's to link one after 12:10, but it was due on 11/1, okay? And to me, that's 11/1, and I should have got my bill, okay, in September, so that I would not be in this stress, and something should be done about it. And I have it, and I haven't. Okay, so, something needs to be done. This is not right. Thank you.
Diane, I was just talking to the tax office if you have it already. Do they do some of those? Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Candy Hoover, and I understand that there is a bill law that has been passed in Humboldt County for cap, rent control cap.
What was it? Cap control?
A cap control on rent. And I'd like to know if we can do that here in Trinity County for low-income people that are on fixed incomes that live in mobile home parks or whatever other facilities, where the rent keeps increasing and the cost of our living for our money on a fixed income is very low, and it's just enough probably to pay for our medication. Are you with me? I'm a little nervous here. I really feel that that should be something that should be brought to everybody's attention. It should be, like, put on a priority list. Trinity County is the lowest poverty county in California, and what is it that I need to do to go forward with this matter, to take it into my hands, to see about getting a county cap on rent control for Trinity County?
You said the bill that I was tracking, I'm not sure whether the governor went ahead and signed it. If it's the bill that I was tracking, I'm not sure whether the governor went ahead and signed it or not. I can look back at that, and it was also leaving it up to each county whether they would implement it or not.
Because you're just the guy I want to talk to. Because you're in my district, John Finley, right?
I'm not sure about that. Where do you live?
Indian Creek.
No, you would be in District Three, which is Supervisor Chadwick. I'm Southern Trinity.
Hi. So, okay, why don't either the two of you, Ms. Yeho?
I was suggesting to Supervisor Chadwick myself, and Mrs. Duncan.
See if there's anything to...
There was a bill that went forward. I don't know whether the governor signed it or not, and it's the bill you're thinking of that I'm thinking of.
Okay, and when did that take place?
It would have been signed at the end of October, September.
Of this year?
And I'm not sure. No, this year.
Of this year, yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, can I...
Yeah, I can repeat myself. If you'd like, I can get your information and then schedule a meeting if it's okay with Supervisor Chadwick, and then Suzie Calcoms, and we can all meet and discuss the item, because it's a difficult process, but we can discuss and see if it's something we could do here in Trinity.
If the bill was even implemented.
Absolutely. I feel we can, I feel we can get it passed here, I really do.
It was passed by the state of California. If it was passed by the state of California, I'm sorry, correcting. It was legislation put forward by the state of California at implementing fixing cap of low income and also rent control. So, we'll see if that, they'll see if that actually passes and if we can take advantage of it.
Was there anything else?
Actually, yeah, I'm right here with this lady right here for the tax. I mean, that...
And I would address the tax office.
I did. I have for seven years, been doing it for seven years, going through the same, exact same thing she goes through, that same thing, seven years. So, they don't get their money because they don't do any right, they submit to different ...
All right, then, when are you talking to whoever's...
But anyway, anyway, I'm really concerned about the cap control for rent control. That's my priority here. So, I called you and made an appointment with you. Is that what I do?
If you can leave, Tina, your phone number, name and phone number, we can give you a call.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good morning, Veronica Kelly-Alves, Douglas-City. I am here because I would like to ask the board to take a look at the Planning and Building Department and maybe giving them some more resources for their Enforcement Division. Enforcement has become an issue for them, and they need additional resources to make sure complaints are promptly processed and assessed. Enforcement is so far down the totem pole of priorities that it's becoming a negligible situation for the county. For over a year, my neighborhood has been discussing with them the absence of fire protection required by a CUP for one of the businesses right along Highway 3 in front, down to the right. They're supposed to have an elevated water supply for fire suppression, and that was decreed in 1987, not one drop of water on that piece of property. And I've been dealing with them for over a year. I've put in the actual complaint forms at the desk. They can't even find those now. I mean, it's just so far down, enforcement is so far down the priority list because they're all doing reports and paperwork. They're working their butts off. They need more resources, otherwise, it's just words on paper. You think you're protecting the community by saying they can't do this, or they can do that, and it's words on paper. If there's no enforcement, last night, my neighborhood was subjected to a gas that came out of a warehouse that's also another business in front of my home. I have photos, I have video, and they don't have a CUP for anything that should, for auto repair or what appears to be something going on there, but we were subjected to a horrible gas last night that just floated in the air. And that was after, that was at 5:38 PM, and who do you call? They don't have time to go check things. And I'm not talking like, hey, somebody's tree is hanging over. I mean, there's a lot of things going on, but things are negligible now. There's no fire suppression on that APN at the end of, but begin in one side of Marshall Ranch Road. We've now got a gas coming at us, and it said, "No, don't worry." And I've watched a lot of people go in front of the Planning Commission and say, "Hey, you have a CUP in place, and someone's not supposed to be doing this or that." And everybody kind of looks and goes, "Okay," and it always continues. People, you know, we have homes, we have lives, so do the people working in all of these divisions. They might need more manpower, they might need more money, but something so that you can take the adjective from a piece of paper and make it a verb, because that's what protects us, and that's what gives us confidence when you guys say, "Don't worry, we got you. I know this is going to work." It's a piece of paper. If there's no enforcement, there's no bite. It's like me telling my daughter, "I'm going to take your phone away if you do this wrong." And if I don't, she'll keep doing it. So, thank you. Look at that.
Richard, can you... Oh, my apologies.
Chair, if I could address that.
Sure.
Mrs. Douglas-City, I did watch the videos on the Planning Commission. I followed up with you, and I followed up with Leslie. I made multiple contacts with AmeriGas, and my understanding with the Planning Department is there was a resolution with AmeriGas that they did something with the Planning Department that satisfied them. I can follow up. I went by your residence, and I talked to David at that time. You were gone, I think it was a swim meet or something, and it was a little while back, but I told him that, just have you get ahold of me, and I'd go over that information. So, I would rather, because this is outline, if we could just, if you could just make an appointment with Leslie or with Kim, I'd be glad to join you, because there is a paper trail. It's been a little while, so I just don't...
So, why don't you two meet right in...
I checked on it last week and never got with the Plan Department. They never gave me that information. So, I will absolutely give you a call.
So, you guys can...
Sure, but it's now on public record again, because I've been here before with, about it, as well as Planning Commission. Thank you.
And this was specifically the conversation I had with Leslie, because it did go before the Planning Commission, but as a board supervisor, if I hadn't been watching the videos, it never came to me. It was only through the videos, and so it was not just for this situation, but to have a process in place.
There's probably a handful of CUPs that need to be reviewed. All right, so you guys will work on that and bring Richard in if you need to. Okay, anyone else for public comment?
Jim Still, H4 California. Article 11, Section 7.5, a city or county major, which we just went through 10 years ago on this Mountain County Healthcare District, proposed by the legislative body of a city, charter county, or charter county, and committed to the voters for approval may not do either of the following: include or exclude any part of the city or county, which you did exclude all the people but the people that are on PUD. You discriminated against PUD, and they're paying for the hospital, and it ain't right. The only thing that would make this right is for the board supervisors to subject the ordinance that they reimbursed the PUD payers to the hospital, the money that was collected on taxes, and put out another tax revenue source to the entire county, not just PUD That's, it's pure and simple discrimination to exclude all the other people from paying for this hospital tax. This was, this hospital was paid for by the county before it became Mountain County Healthcare District, and it was working fine. Also, I'd like to state on the ambulance service, they want to charge PUD customers a assessment for that service, which has been working fine for 15 to 20 years in Trinity County, at the rate that it's set at today. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Ware, H4. I discovered something. Well, I didn't really discover it, somebody else did. There's a treasure map in Trinity County. It's called the Growers. It's called their addresses, phone numbers, where they live, and for us to publish that information, it's a treasure map for every gang, every criminal, every person out there that wants to go attack some undefended agriculture farmer who is not prepared to be raped. And that's what's happening. It's happening all over the county. A lot of them are not being reported because they're just afraid, and if they have a weapon, they get in trouble. There's no, there's no good way to go about this. We need to find a way to secure their addresses and not make a map and not have a treasure hunt going on in Trinity County. That's all I have to say.
All right, anyone else for public comment?
Liam Golden, Douglas-City. I understand, he says he's neighbor of mine, and gentleman that was just up here. But on the flip side of that, last week, it was one evening one night, the motion detectors went off at my store. I had to call from my, from the security. I live 11 minutes away from the store. I left for my store, and I showed up, three sheriffs, and one eyewitness told me. Amazing to me that they got there that quick. Also, last week, I understand what he says about the maps and all that about marijuana. I think there was a legal grow on top of the grade that was getting clipped off, and the cops, police also got there, got a helicopter in the sky, caught the people doing it. So, I think, you know, I think they're doing what they can to prevent it, they can, it's a big county. I understand both of Mrs. Douglas-City and his questions about that, but I think that just in the last week, I know of two instances in Douglas-City that they were there, that they did what was right on time, so I give them, I give them a few notes for that. And then last night, we had Scott Graham, a long-time TCU officer up here, and football coach, gave him a horrible wreck, so that took him as well.
All right, any other public comment? All right, we'll move into our presentation and first take a three-minute break for our guests to get situated for our presentation, and then we'll move into our presentation. All right. All right, no one else needed to take a minute. So, moving on to 1.1, our presentation. Receive a presentation from Assembly Member Jim Wood regarding end-of-the-year wrap-up, no fiscal impact. Good morning and welcome, Senator Edward Wood.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work that we did in the past legislative session. I introduced 22 bills, 15 of which were either signed or implemented through the state budget or through an administrative action. One was vetoed, actually, two were vetoed, and then the others I'll continue to work on next year. Most recently, outside of our legislative session, my days have been on the ground in Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, doing what I can to support the first responders, evacuees, and people who've experienced widespread power shut-offs. The wildfires have continued throughout California and is certainly on the top of the mind of every elected official, local government, emergency, and fire responders and the public. Because of the work of local governments and state agencies, weather and fire science, they've come a long way since the devastating fires a few years ago. Thankfully, no lives were lost, have been lost so far in the Sonoma and Mendocino this year, and I attribute that to the amazing work by our local governments, our first responders, the prepositioning of resources in response to predicted weather events, and we've been very fortunate so far. The legislature has wrestled with the issues that the aging PG&E infrastructure has brought and what is the best way to move forward. Breaking them up is an option, but we also know, and I also know you are aware, that small utilities have their own vulnerabilities. But please know that we are working on that and are looking for what's best for the public. A month after the Camp Fire last year, I introduced AB-38, which helped to create more resilient homes and communities. We learned that more houses built after 2008, after that building code was established, upgrades survived the Camp Fire than houses that were, that were built earlier. The new bill, the new law creates a pilot project to help homeowners in communities harden their homes and manage their vegetation. It will also, through a collaborative process of state, local departments, and agencies, determine what standards should be adopted for creating this resiliency based upon the information, best information and research. While we begin the process, we will seek the necessary funding to support these efforts, and I have bipartisan support to do that. We know people live in our rural, often forested communities for many reasons, for the beauty, the quiet, the independence that comes from living on these acreage, and for some, its affordability. The recent fires have caused insurance companies to non-renew homeowners insurance, and that's another issue that must be addressed, and that's an issue, significant issue here in Trinity County. So, I'd like to move on to some other issues related to my other work. As Chair of the Assembly Health Committee, I'm continuing to focus on cost containment. We can't improve access to healthcare without improving, without controlling the costs. Pharmaceutical costs continue to spiral out of control. I've offered several bills that were signed by Governor Brown and a bill this year signed by Governor Newsom. This year, Attorney General Javier Becerra joined me in this fight against pharmaceutical companies that engage in collusive agreements with generic manufacturers to prevent competition and delay the introduction of generic drugs to the market. These are known as pay-for-delay. These agreements almost always benefited, didn't always benefit just the brand-name drug, but they also benefited the generic drugs manufacturers, but not patients. Big Pharma and the generic manufacturers pulled out every lobbying tool they had. Despite this, it was a long and challenging battle, but we did get the bill to the governor's desk, and he signed it earlier, actually, last month. I also took on the monopolistic dialysis industry, primarily controlled by Davita and Fresenius, multi-billion-dollar companies. Decades ago, Congress passed legislation ensuring that all patients with end-stage renal disease or kidney failure qualify for Medicare regardless of their age, which provided significant financial assistance to patients needing dialysis and kidney transplants. Once the ACA passed, lifting the prohibition on pre-existing conditions, dialysis companies began making tax-deductible contributions to a third party, the American Kidney Fund, which in turn began providing commercial insurance to some dialysis patients. It sounds charitable, right? However, the companies began receiving reimbursements up to four and five times the Medicare rate. So, for every dollar the companies donated, they, and they got a tax deduction for it, they got a $4 to $5 return on their investment, and suddenly, that doesn't sound terribly charitable. And actually, the patients actually saw no difference in the care they were receiving. Again, this scam increases the overall cost of healthcare for all of us, and it results in all of us having higher healthcare premiums, because at the end of the day, somebody has to pay for this. Fortunately, the governor did sign this bill, but as is not unusual in these cases, we have been sued, and so we'll see how that all plays out. I also introduced a bill, healthcare to assist our more than 1 million vulnerable seniors. When a low-income senior who was covered by no-cost Medicare turns 65, they often find themselves subject to a loophole and a law that re-categorize them as a share of cost beneficiary, often costing them hundreds of dollars a month just because they turned 65, money they just don't have. We closed that loophole with AB-1088, and very fortunate that a lot of seniors will have that issue before them now. Continuing my work on the opioid crisis, last year, I carried a couple of bills. I was shocked that in a couple of the counties I represent, we actually have more opioid prescriptions than people, about one and a half times the number of opioid prescriptions than people as it is here, it is in Humboldt County, it is in Mendocino County, and it is a challenge for all of us. We've been working on this bill. There were a flurry of bills last year. One created requirement for electronic prescriptions. A significant number of opioid prescriptions are being obtained through fraudulent means. The bill requires that all prescriptions be submitted electronically by 2021, with few exceptions. The process can significantly reduce the paper-based fraud and forgery that we see, reduce medication errors. Due to poor prescriber handwriting, I know I was a prescriber, and my handwriting wasn't so good, it wasn't unusual for me to get a call from a pharmacist and ask if that was a one or a two, or what that word was. So, these are the kinds of things that will help reduce errors, reduce fraud, and overall, hopefully, close some of the loopholes that are allowing people to get medications fraudulently. It also will cut down on doctor shopping, people going from one place to another, because you will now be able to track this through a database at the state. Another bill requires that prescribers of opioids offer their patients who have been determined to be at high risk of overdose of co-prescription of naloxone, a medication that immediately reverses the effects of opioid overdose. It's a tool that we can immediately save, that can immediately save lives and provide an opportunity also to discuss the risks for those people who are on these prescriptions. You see a lot of first responders that actually carry this now. I'm not certain if that's happening in this county, but we certainly see that in many communities that I represent, we've actually seen this actually been deployed and saved people's lives. Last month, as the Chair of the Assembly Health Committee, I joined two other committees in holding an oversight hearing on vaping. My interest in vaping is related to my position on smoking in general. As a healthcare provider, as a dentist, I've seen the health effects and dangers of smoking, and I'm passionate about educating the public and supporting policies that will protect us from what is often corporate greed. Most recent numbers from the CDC report 39 deaths related to vaping and about 1,900 cases of illnesses related to vaping, and that has certainly raised our awareness of this issue nationally and locally. The data shows a percentage of our young people who are vaping, growing, are becoming to these high levels of nicotine. We're seeing now that about 27% of high school students have, have or currently vape, and that number spiked significantly in 2018. Let this thing in. One Juul pod is equivalent to as much nicotine as a traditional pack of cigarettes, and the ability to hit on that is much easier than it is to go out and light up, quite frankly. The information presented at the hearing, we'll have another hearing soon, which will guide how we look at our public policy on vaping next year. One of the six bills that will spill over into 2020 is a 365-day-a-year fishing license. We were on a roll to get something done last year, but we decided to wait on a study that's coming out from the Department of Fish and Wildlife about how the... coming out from the Department of Fish and Wildlife about how the state might reverse a decline in requests for fishing and hunting licenses. So we'll wait to see about those recommendations, and we will incorporate that into our bill. I'm hopeful that we get that across the line. If you have a AAA membership, you certainly don't have that expire on December 31st and have to renew it. If you have any sort of other kinds of memberships that are yearly, you certainly don't have to, you know, fight on the 1st of January to have it valid for the entire year. It's ludicrous that we are still paid for fishing licenses and that you may not get for 165 days out of it, so we're determined to change that regardless of what it costs us. It's been a good year in general, but it's been a tough one. Taking on the pharmaceutical companies and multi-billion-dollar dialysis companies has proven to be quite a challenge, but I actually can kind of get energized by things like that. Finding the right solution to address our utilities, specifically PG&E, its size, and the state of its aging infrastructure will be a top priority as we look forward to the next year. But also continuing to address and prevent severe wildfires that we have faced will be a challenge as well, but there is bipartisan support in that. My partner to the east, before he became Senator Dolly, and I worked closely together on a bill of billion dollars over five years to help with vegetation management. He's moved on to the Senate, but that just means I have a colleague in the Senate and not the Assembly now, so. Housing and homelessness continue to be a challenge for, to many folks, as well as local governments. Pretty much every community I go to feels like that's one of their top issues. It will be a big year, no doubt. I know that people want action on a lot of these issues. I look forward to the opportunity to tackle some of those going forward. If you have questions and you have time, please ask me. If you have answers, I'm happy to hear those, too.
Great. Board members, any questions?
Yep.
Sorry, surprise to finish.
If you could have your, regarding your fish, fishing and hunting licenses, if you could contact James, who is our Fish and Game Advisory Board Chair. We'd be really interested in hearing about that bringing it to our Fish and Game Advisory Board.
Absolutely happy to do that.
Yes, I would. Making notes back there. Also, how would your refurb-ing or herding our houses, is that, how is that going to impact our low-income? Is there our grants out there?
Right.
I'm looking at the bill right now, just giving you a quick overview.
When we first started, when we first started with the bill, what we were looking for was to try to create a grant program, a loan grant program, very low-interest or grant program.
Okay.
And we were specifically concerned about low-income folks, and one of the challenges was that, you know, as these bills move forward and you find that the Appropriations Committee didn't like that idea, and then there wasn't, we didn't get a lot of positive feedback from the governor's office on money for this. But what we did learn is that there are other sources of resources out there that won't cost the state as much to do some of what we want to do, but the bottom line is, we want to figure out the best way to protect communities. And the challenge there is that if you, in a neighborhood, do everything you can to harden your home, and your neighbor does nothing, have you really increased, have you really made things safer? And so the focus will be on communities and working together, and there will be a combination of grants and loans to do that. Some of that will be vegetation management, but others will, in as far as home hardening, there are some of the, there are basic things, obviously. I mean, I think we pretty much all know that shake roofs are probably not the safest thing in fire country. There probably aren't as many of them out there anymore, but there still are. Things like protecting your gutters from leaves, vent areas that need to be screened, because as these flying embers get up in the vents, that often ignites, often ignites fires.
Is there a minimum number of homes that are considered a community, or is it just that we?
That's all, that's all open at this point. In my mind, you know, three homes could be a community.
Right.
You know, and especially when we get into our more rural areas, so.
And we also have homes that might need bringing up to certain?
Yeah.
Minimum codes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Chad, I think you're here.
No, just saying, you and the COB licensing for California, there is no standard for the earth in homes. They're aesthetically beautiful, very fire-resilient. There's been a lot of work last month. We have one vote in our county, Jim Santiago. I believe the vote was at the end of last month, and I don't, I haven't heard whether it passed, but if we could embrace having a set standard for the COB, then it, the price to build is reduced, but because there isn't a California code. So I'll shoot Aaron off an email, so that'd be one thing. And I'll talk offline, why our numbers are so high. I explained this back in Washington to the Senate and the way that government restructured the prescriptions. So if you have a individual that was getting 12 prescriptions, one a month, and up here it's very difficult because of a lot of the service providers are down and ready. We have no pharmacy on our side of the mountain, and so you took that prescription, and because of the dose, it was now maybe three, so you went from 12 to 36. It's still one person, but now instead of having 12, he has 36. That's why the numbers are off. So we've created this false, which actually prevented our citizens from being able to have access because of the poverty level being so low. So then we had a spike of the drugs that were on the street, because the person who only had enough money to travel once a month, and I'm not saying that it's okay to turn to street drugs, they weren't prepared to travel twice more, especially in the winter. So then we ended up getting an increase, and I did speak to the Senate and the Congress a year ago, and I explained that we manufactured those numbers. Our patients haven't changed, the numbers have changed, so that's, that's, makes us look terrible, makes Trinity County look terrible, but it's not the reality.
I appreciate that, and I'll look for that information. I was not aware, so I do appreciate that.
Surprised, Chris, I'm sorry. Let's get you.
So you gave a whole talk about what you did for the year and didn't mention cannabis in the, you know. So of course cannabis is still a monstrous issue. It has not been solved. We have made strides towards making it better for the citizens of the county, but we still are very dependent on help from the state, and so what help enforcement and streamlining the licensing process and all that have gone, or that's what a high focus of yours?
Well, I appreciate that. I didn't, while I didn't author specific bills related to cannabis, that didn't mean I didn't work on, work on those issues, and I appreciate that, and I apologize for the oversight. There, it has been frustrating. We had an administration before that set a process in motion. It wasn't the process that I particularly cared for. I felt when we did the Medical Cannabis Regulatory Safety Act in 2015, we talked about, okay, this needs to be simple, it needs to be easy to accomplish, and it needs to be, and it needs to be not costly. And so unfortunately, we've ended up with complicated, difficult, and costly, with exactly the opposite, with three different, three different agencies within the state overseeing this, with each of them have manuals that stick, which creates challenges for counties and cities and the state, quite frankly. There has been a lot of concern about enforcement, and we hear, on the other hand, well, if there were more municipalities or jurisdictions that allowed this, we wouldn't need as much enforcement. I disagree on that, but, you know, we've given, we created a template in 2015 for people to come into compliance, and it still feels that there are a lot of people who've chosen not to, and that continues to create, create challenges going forward. How we approach that is challenging. The new administration was reluctant to spend more money on enforcement, though we advocated for it through the budget, through the legislature as well. I think if you are a licensed entity with the state, you deserve that protection, that other unlicensed entities are not competing with you and undercutting you and making your life more difficult. Unfortunately, we haven't seen as much increase in enforcement as I think is appropriate, considering what we're asking the people to move forward, and it continues to be a frustration. Also feel the taxes are over the top. If you, you may not know this, but I'll tell you this. So in 2016, we had a bill looking at taxation. I worked on a bill, Senator McGuire worked on a bill. We had a starting point for taxes, and through the process, we learned that these tax rates were too high, and we lowered them in our bill. The problem that happened is that when Proposition 64 was introduced and formally put in onto the ballot, it took our starting point for taxes and put them into statute. We realized that our taxes were off by a factor of eight or nine. Those taxes would have grossed, we recognized that, and in our bills, we reduced the tax rates. But the proposition had already put those tax rates in there, and now the only way to change some of those tax rates is to go back to the people, and there is not, there is not a lot of movement to do that, quite frankly, and it's frustrating. So we have, we have been, I've been a part of bills, multiple bills, asking, the legislature asking to reduce the taxes as to what, to make this work better for people, and each time we have been shot down. We believe that reducing the taxes, which would require a two-thirds vote, would further the intentions of Prop 64, which is the guidelines for actually changing something without going back to the ballot. But each and every time this has been introduced, it has been shot down. So it doesn't mean we're going to continue, not continue to work on these issues, we are, and it is frustrating, and it is challenging, and I think we all felt like when this started, it was going to be a 10-year project to get there, and I didn't expect it to be a 10-year painful project, I just kind of hope that we all work it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for that reminder about Prop 64 and 10-year legislation. If there's anything we can do as a board, it's a letter of support. I also chair Government Finance at CSAC. If we at CSAC can help push some of that on the taxation, that will help gain more money for enforcement ultimately, which is everybody's, on every side of the issue is looking for, so I think we can do to support that, let us know. Also, I'd like to thank you for your support of the block grant NCRP received. We are starting to navigate those waters to see how we can roll that money out to our region of approximately $4 million. So thank you very much for your support. All right. Anything else? No?
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you again for not being able to be here. I wasn't able to make it last year, and I apologize for that. I do want to point out, Erin Dunn is here with me today. Raise your hand here. Erin's our field representative in Eureka, so if you have constituents who have problems with state agencies, and I'm sure there is no shortage of that, please feel free to reach out to Erin. A great part of what we do is not passing legislation, it's about working with our constituents to solve problems. DMV, EDD, you name it, whatever alphabet soup agency we have with the state, if you've got a challenge or a problem, please let us know, and let us help you work through them, so. Thank you so much.
Good to see you.
Excellent, appreciate it.
All right. Any other board members, anything?
I have not yet.
Okay. We'll move on to consent. These I didn't include in routine non-controversial matters will be acted upon the board by one roll-call motion. A member of the board staff of the public may request that I may be pulled separately. I will be pulling on 2.5. Board members?
Let me show 2.6.
All ready?
I am 2.10 and 2.27.
2.17, you said?
2.27.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Any staff members? Any members of the public? Okay, so this thing, I'd like to pull 2.5, and for Mike Ware, I'd like to pull 2.12 or 2.14?
Don't go away, guys, to make sure. You said 2.5?
Sorry.
Yeah, and you're on.
Sorry. 2.12 and 2.14 for Mike Ware.
All right, that's what I had. Thank you.
John Light and Douglas City, 2.15, please.
Okay, so remaining of our agenda.
I'm going to drop.
Thank you. All right, please pull the board.
I.
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 Yes. 2.5 is our first item, adopt a resolution, adopt a resolution which authorizes the elections officials to conduct a special election consolidated with the general election on March 3, 2020, no fiscal impact. So I just wanted a little explanation on this item for the public's knowledge, Shannon, if you could.
It's, it's a clerk of the board item?
Right, but it just, as a backup for the elections, it is, you're correct, but you have some knowledge of this. Let me get there. All right.
I'm happy to help out as well, but just a little background about what this item is. When the, when LACO decides to form a new special district, it does have to come back with the board to make a determination if the board is going to place it on the election under Government Code Section 57,000. The resolution is just merely having the board place it on the special election, which is consolidated with the general election, and that's authorized under the Election Code, which says when you have a statewide general election, the counties can take their special items and consolidate them, so we only have to have one ballot. It's a pretty, pretty standard process, and the information contained in here is pretty consistently out of code in terms of what we have to provide, and the information is also received by LACO.
So I'd like to take, use this and take this opportunity for maybe Shannon to explain how this will lay out in March in terms of this hospital district and the taxation. There are actually a couple items to this subject.
That is correct. As in the resolution, it specifies the questions that will be on the ballot. The first question will be, can a district be formed? The second question will be, shall there be a task to fund this district? And then the third race that will be on the ballot will be for candidates to form those board members.
So those interested, be in on that board, will have to contact your office by?
Absolutely. They'll need to come in. The filing period, as with other, every other position, is opens November 11th and closes December 6th. And as soon as the board passes this resolution, we'll be putting a notice of election in the paper, so that'll be also.
Great. That's all I wanted, was just to really highlight this and make sure people understood the process.
Just a housekeeping on it. It's a five-board seat, one for each district, and it looks like it rotates the same as we do, three and two. So out of curiosity, after they're elected, since they're all elected at the same time, is the first group going to be the minor group of two, and then they come back in two years, or do they serve six? Just out of curiosity.
That's a good question. If I'm remembering correctly, however, and I'm looking back through, I believe it's, it's not by district, I believe it's by general, so anybody in this district can run, you don't have to live in a specific portion of it, and the code says that when they elect them, they all decide who serves two and four years, and make that determination internally. It's not something the board is involved in.
I know the board's not involved. I was just wondering, because it was a three and two out of the gate, how that worked.
Yeah, the code has a very specific way that the process they have to go through to make that determination for the first one, and thereafter it continues on.
And as stated, it is at large, it's not by a super special district.
Okay.
And the board themselves will decide.
And the board themselves will decide.
Correct. Their board will decide.
Right, yes. I do have a question or a statement, Counselor. Just to be clear, LAFC didn't design this. You mentioned that this was put together by LAFC, which is not correct.
I apologize. It was put together by a group of folks, but it had to go through LAFC to get to this process.
To see if they qualify.
Correct. And so the information we have, and LAFC holds the protest hearings, and it's gone through that process, which is why it is now with us. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, good point. All right, any other questions? That's all I really needed, was just to highlight that whole process for everyone.
Ms. Graves, if you could also pull this.
Oh, my apologies. Yeah, you did.
I have a question before the board okay's any election. That the public, that it be made known what our new machines were that we got months ago. Just for the general public's knowledge and so they can research them, but also for training for people that will either be assigned this election by the state or more likely the feds. They need to know that ahead of time and have it confirmed so they can begin their training.
Thank you. All right, I think that's it. I would entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
May I, Shannon?
Motion approved, 2.5 as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, you're right. Thank you, Tina.
Supervisor Chatter?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to 2.6. Adopt a resolution which supports the 7th Annual Hay Fork Light Parade. No fiscal impact. Supervisor Chatter, I believe you pulled this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to clarify that the date is December 8. In the backup, there was conflicting dates. So this is just about cleaning up the differences. So this will be for December 8.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? All right.
In that case, I'm not for it.
(laughing). I don't want somebody coming on the first, and there's no parade.
Okay, okay, you have a motion to accept as Bobby has corrected. Do you want a second?
I do. Okay. Quickly. I'll second. All right.
You think interference from Keith?
Supervisor Chatter?
Aye.
Supervisor Fleming?
Yes.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes, thank you. Okay, 2.10. Buying the proposed license will meet the public convenience and necessity. If I no objections to the issuance of a wine grower and small beer manufacturer license to Trinity County Brewing Company LLC for Trinity County Brewing Company LLC at 301 Main Street, Weareville, 96093. No fiscal impact.
Madam Chair, this applicant is asking for a wine grower's license, which is a winery license, which I hold. So with that, I'm going to recuse off of this issue.
Great, thank you for stating why you're recusing. I'll wait till you leave the room. Okay. Any questions from the board members on this item? Members of the public? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I just made it all together.
(laughing).
Thank you. Thank you, Bo. Thank you, Tina. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. All right. Item 2.12. Adopt a resolution which authorizes the elections official to conduct and consolidate all federal, state, local elections in calendar year 2020, under fiscal impact. Supervisor Chatter, I believe you pulled this item? No? Oh, Mike Ware did, okay. My apologies. Yeah, you're right.
Good morning. Yeah, this funny thing happened this morning. When I was letting my dogs out, there's this little dog in my driveway that was sitting there, it was just squirting away. And I, you know, and this dog's a pet. It was just sitting there. And my dogs went out as usual, and they have a big bone that they share back and forth. Well, I went back inside to take care of business, and then all of a sudden, my dogs were just going nuts. And I go outside and look, and here's this little dog sitting in the middle of the driveway, and it's got this huge bone, almost the size of this dog. I mean, this dog's a little rat dog, you know, that yaps all the time. And it's sitting there trying to steal this bone away. It somehow got it out of the yard while the dogs were inside last night. Now, this dog's sitting there, and it's actually taunting my dogs. And I'm just kind of going, what the hell? So I just bring my dogs in, they quiet down, give them a snack. And strange thing was, when I was on my way here on Highway 3, I see this big bone all the way to Highway 3, which is eh, not that far, but it's a distance. So this dog managed to drag it. The little dog was definitely hit because it was trying to drag this bone, and it was way over the size. Anyhow, it was just curious, you know, how nature works. You know, this dog was taunting my dogs, and then, you know, over something, and it's wrong. Anyhow, so this issue. You know, there's a couple things.
Do you have a specific question for this item?
Yeah, I do. Primarily, what is going to happen since we're moving to the election that would have appointed board members to these different, to these different boards, these different specialty boards in January? When are they going to be appointed that are expiring in January? And how are they going to be appointed? Because with that, with the terms ending January 1st or December 31st, whichever one it is, there's going to be a lot of boards that are not going to be able to make quorum because they have members that are not there. Has this even been addressed? Has anyone even looked at this? Because it's an issue. Because you will have a non-functioning, non-functioning boards all over the county, all over, you know, school boards and everything else that have these elections, you know?
So if I understand your question, you're asking about the special districts who you believe their term will expire in January, and this is consolidating them all into November. Do I have that right?
Right. Well, is it consolidating them for next November?
Right.
Because they come in, they come due. So these people have gotten an extra year in their term?
No. Do you want...
I can answer that. And that's a big question that's been coming up, especially since our election moved from June to March. You do have folks that have their terms go beyond. And so unfortunately, the legislature didn't put specifics about how to handle that, but there is prior election code that says the boards have the ability to shorten or lengthen the term for a period of time based on these types of criteria. So the specific boards would have to. And this won't affect us, as we are a November election, which hasn't been modified. But it would affect those that have a new March election. They would have to pass a resolution to modify the end date of their elected officials. And there is election code specifically discussed with that. But it is a very valid concern that they should take consideration of.
May I, may I add, Tina? This item that we are, that is brought before you has nothing to do with the term limits of special district members. The item before you is to allow the Office of the Elections to perform elections for the year 2020. It has nothing to do with these specific terms, the item in front of you.
I agree, but it could dovetail and test questions. But we got the question answered, so.
Yeah, well, I think differently, because if I change the election date, you've changed all of these boards, all, you know, it affected everything. It didn't just change your election, it changed everything. And I have a follow-up question from what Kay was asking. I'm not sure why this person's still even here. She violated the law, you know, she's suspended. So, I mean...
That's it, we've answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, oh, Mike?
Yeah?
Did you not...
We only finished item 8.
Right, just hold tight.
Yeah, I'll wait.
You might pull another item. John, go ahead.
You can deal with him.
No, go ahead.
(laughing). Are you wishing to speak on 2.12?
Today's election day. And in all reality, we should have had an election today because the process that you guys did to eliminate today's election was wrong. You had 240 days prior to the election to come up with a final decision. On that day, which was March 8, you had a special board of supervisors meeting. And you decided at that time you were going to send out the board of supervisors, who are the only ones who had the right by law to ask the special districts if they wanted to consolidate. You asked on the 240th day to start a process that should have been finished on that day. So you wrote a letter, which I have never seen, to the special districts. On the 19th of March, you received back letters from the districts that were, that were received in February, which is very interesting, how they could be received prior to you guys sending the letter out to us. So in all reality, we should have legally had an election today. Because you guys, as normal, you give, you give permission for something that's already been done. And I'm tired of you guys doing it, you know? So Shannon did not have the right by law to ask these, these people to consolidate. Only the board of supervisors had that right if you read the law that you guys are using.
Counselor, would you like to clarify anything?
I would not, actually. It's not on the agenda. The item wasn't related to this, and it's not relevant to this. We'll have to discuss with the board afterwards.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions on this item? 2.17. Seeing none?
I'll make a motion. Now we approve item 2.12 as presented.
Second.
All right, please pull the board.
Supervisor Fleming?
Aye.
Supervisor Chatter?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Aye. All right, thank you. Moving on to 2.14, I believe.
The only question I had on that is there's only one...
Let me read the item line first, please. Approve an agreement with Democracy Live, Inc. to provide an omni-ballot online and authorize a clerk, recorder, assessor to sign any amendments to this agreement. 9,800 per year from the election budget. All right, your question, please.
My question is, there was only one company you can choose from? There weren't other companies? Is that what I'm doing, Shannon?
I don't believe so.
Aye.
But I'll always tell the department to answer that.
There was other, one other company who has a RABDM system that is certified by the Secretary of State, but they have, they do not have any California counties or any counties for that fact in operation at the point, at the moment. Democracy Live is a proven system, so that's the choice I got with.
Thank you for that clarification. Anybody else? Board members, questions? No, all right.
You have a second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, I think our last item that was pulled, 2.15. Adopt a resolution which commends the board of supervisors Governance Manual to add amendments from the closed session section. Did I miss anything?
We have no comments.
You're right. All right. Hold tight, John.
All right.
Get there, no question. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, John Lattin, Douglas City, Madam Chairman of the Board. With respect to this item, we, obviously deals with subjects covered by the Brown Act. And we're all aware that the Brown Act sets a pretty high bar in favor of the policy of having government activities conducted in public. I ask that this be pulled because while I'm sure that intent was, was good, I don't think that the proposed announcement, announcements from closed session really advance the public's right to know in any way. And in fact, could cause some confusion. There are a couple of phrases in here that not only are not in the Brown Act, but could be easily read to be in conflict with the Brown Act. And as we know, the Brown Act sets a high bar, but you can't set a low bar, lower bar at a county level. It emphasizes that final improvement of settlements of litigation of recent subject have to be reported out from the board. Fair enough. It goes on later on to say, recording out may be deferred. What it, may be deferred doesn't appear in the Brown Act. As soon as, is repeated a couple of times in the context of as, report out as soon as possible. So I think there's a spin on this that really should be eliminated by the board. The, there's a provision in the proposed amendment to the county code that matters may be reviewed by county council. Well, of course, that, that makes sense. That's very good. And again, I mentioned that it says that these reporting outs may be deferred. And I don't think that that accurately states what the Brown Act states. So what's my, what's my point here? In general, I think that setting up ad hoc committees and advisory committees is a very controversial subject. And in general, I agree with my friend Tom Volonko that advisory committees usually don't get anything done. But this is a really important subject. And I suggest that the board tabled this and set up an appropriate committee with a very limited period of time to report back and a composition of people who will be dedicated to trying to come up with a good recommendations. And have that happen. A real ad hoc committee that's legally to be of limited time and a very focused subject. Again, I could go into detail and do some lawyer-istic comments on the proposal, but it's just not consistent with the law. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Questions? All right. Any questions on language, comments?
Now, this is just a result of the board giving direction to staff to bring forward additional regulations within our Governance Manual regarding reporting out. And this is what staff's presenting to the board. It's up to the board. Interpretation, no negotiation, no changes.
All right. I would like to address 215, but in a different manner, if you concluded with that. Yeah, for now.
Okay, so on page 187 of the 429, on number one, the last paragraph, it's in regards to the chair. And then again, on the chair pro temp. Both of them say that they cannot take that or position until after one year of service. And I would like to delineate that. There are counties throughout California that their first year of service, they are chair. So how would this affect Trinity County? Next year after this, Jeremy will be chair. And who would ever be coming into District 5, whoever wins that would be prohibited from being vice chair. It's in the Governance Manual, and so I'm bringing it up now. I know it's specific, but it's in, it's on the record. So I want to say on the record. I would like that to be delineated. So there is, is no more jumping over hoops, that it goes in rotation. If somebody doesn't want to be chair or vice chair, they shouldn't run for that position.
All right, Supervisor Fleming to the chair.
I agree with Supervisor Chatter again. Instead of making those changes at this point, possibly this might be tabled and an ad hoc formed in order to take a look at this and other changes that need to be made.
Okay, because this isn't the item that's on the...
Right, it has, this has nothing to do with the item.
I guess what I'm looking for is what direction the staff, if you would like us to bring something else back to the board, I'd be more than happy to, but this item is kind of...
I understand that it's very specific, I understand that it's very specific, and what Chawwak brought up has no interference on this. That's why I didn't pull it either. But I agree with Bobby a hundred percent.
All right. For the item in front of us, any other questions, comments? All right. I didn't entertain a. Oh, sorry.
To counsel, there's been a statement by that this does not follow the Brown Act. I assume that you've reviewed this and were part of this composing?
Correct. I would disagree with any statements that this doesn't comply with the Brown Act. The sentence that was talked about, reporting out may be deferred under certain circumstances. The next sentence with that is, and in compliance with the Brown Act. There are case law and decisions that talk about anything deferred. It's not specifically in the Brown Act, but the law does delineate it, and so it is referenced here. So this is, a lot of it is cut directly from the Brown Act. Other stuff has been modified and used in other jurisdictions as well. So I would disagree with that.
Okay. Can I ask your question?
It does. So the question I would ask the board, do we want to send this whole, include this into a oversight of the whole manual, or do we want a piecemeal edit of this?
I think we'd have to have another agenda item come back for some of the topics that were discussed. So I think you approve this or not, and we'll bring other agenda items back. And John, did you have a question?
Yes. Just a comment. Possibly adding a section of the state code that does say it can't be deferred. It's a little further down in the state code. That would just back you up, counsel.
Yeah, I'd be able to put anything you want, but I think it does summarize it quite.
Do you think we're covered?
It's a little further down in the state code.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve or not? And what other items come back to us?
Got a couple more questions. If we were to not approve this, would we have to wait a year to bring it back?
And remember.
If you vote on it and it doesn't pass, you have to wait a period of time, but if you defer it, you can defer it to another judge.
Okay. I'd prefer to defer, take a look at it, or work on it a little bit more, and figure out a way to do that.
So what would you like to accomplish?
There's a few things.
If it comes back. Things that were discussed.
There's a few things in the.
Supervisor Brown?
I would just say, it seems like it'd be better to, in my opinion, pass this and have something in place, and if there's going to be a whole ad hoc committee formed to review the whole governance manual and bring recommended changes to that, then this language would be updated at that time if the issue's.
Send a motion to.
Send a motion to approve, to move on from that as presented.
All right. I have a motion, a second, to approve as presented. On favor? Oh, it's not here. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Chawwak?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
No.
Supervisor Benham?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes. And then those other items can come back.
You guys are correct. We have an item on that page, two point two seven. Renify the Director of Transportation's signature on Amendment Number One to the Agreement on Sletton Construction to Upsize Sewer Line, Install an Eighteen-In Drainage Culvert, Place Sanitary Sewer Service, and Replace Water Main, and Increase the Maximal Cost of $121,542 for Construction of the Sheriff's Detention Facility. No Additional Impact to the General Fund, $121,542 from the Existing allocations for Jail Construction. Supervisor Brown, I believe you.
Yes, I pulled this. And Rick, not being an engineer and just a lonely winemaker, I got very lost in your explanation, and I was. Why this was not part of the original bid, and if this is less money or more money. Could you just give a rundown of what exactly you mean?
When we were awarded the BSCC grant, the grant is very specific. You can only build the jail building and put the utility stuffs out front. There's a lot of reasons for that, and mostly I think it kind of revolves around the way they do bond financing to give us the money. So they look to have a lot of the stuff constructed specific to the jail. The utilities from where you connect to the building, well, actually, where you connect to a logical point on the property line, to the connection where it actually is, that cost is what's called hard match cost, meaning that you can, I have to do the work, but I have to do it independent of what's going on in this contract. But they will allow us to use the cost of what it was built at towards our match. So we knew that work was going to be done. We had it kind of sketched out, how we were going to handle it, but we waited until the contract was awarded, and then we went back. We decided most, you either have two ways of doing it. You can contract it out independent, which, for instance, a water line that goes up and around the airport will be contracted out independent. Or you can ask the onsite contractor for a change order cost to see if it's reasonable. So we requested one. What he gave us back was very reasonable, and we tried to avoid putting another contractor onsite, because then they kind of get real good at blaming each other for anything that goes wrong. So it's always best that we just change order with the existing contract rather than issuing an independent contractor. But it really gets back, the whole core of what your question is, gets back to the BSCC requirement, and they're very, very clear that they want delineation between the jail building and everything else that's got to go along around it.
So this sewer upgrade and eventually the water going around, this wasn't part of the jail, but this was part of our hard match that you have presented to us the whole time?
Yes. As you probably recall, I've mentioned the water line being half a million dollars several times.
Right, okay. So is this under or over your original estimate? Or is it too early to tell?
The sewer line was over the estimate, and that was because we ended up moving around a little bit more than we initially thought we were going to move. But the water line was quite a bit under the estimate for the section that we did build to service the jail. If that water line continues to trend that way, we'll actually.
Coming under budget.
Coming under budget.
All right. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, how is this, where's this money coming from? The hundred and twenty-one thousand, it's not part of the initial, which I understand, but it's no impact to general fund. Is it the magic stuff that we use?
It's part of the one point three originally asked of the board.
Oh, okay.
So it is part of the budget.
And is that still at one point three?
It's at one point three right now.
Okay.
Not going to promise it's going to stay there, but it is at one point three right now, because we have some other things we're working on, including the communication. We'll be reporting it out.
You don't want to go there. Stop.
It has.
You don't want to go there either. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? That was my question. Where's this money coming from? Okay.
Okay, Grace from Lewiston. I have a question, because as we all know, these start out with agreement number one, and in a couple of years, will be agreement number eleven, or wherever it ends up. I'm just wondering, are there any more of these costs that people don't know ahead of time? So, okay, this one is already taken out, and I know, I've heard them talk about different water and sewer, and I'm not sure where it comes from, the money either, whether it's in the contract or outside the contract. So this one apparently was included in it, but it'll probably go up some more, because they all do. And it sounds like, what's going to happen when these extras go past what you have set aside? And we don't want any more nasty surprises like, oops, I didn't get the encroachment permit for the airside land sculch. So I'm looking for those kind of, oops, guess what, for the jail. So it'd be great if, I know it's hard to figure out. I just looked at it and went, oh. So I'll leave it to you, because I didn't win. So you get to figure it out, and it would be great if we could see these ahead of time before they smack us in the face. Thank you.
I agree. I'm sorry, I didn't look at the backup material. My question is, does sewer line goes from the jail to Tom Bell Road? Or where does it go? Does it go down the whole length of Tom Bell Road? I mean.
The sewer goes from the top of where the southeast corner of the building is, goes down through four manholes, and connects to Tom Bell for the road that comes out of the juvenile center.
Okay, yeah. Because I knew we had put water and sewer up there for a new courthouse and a new library, not a library, but a hospital, all kinds of stuff. It should already have all the infrastructure there.
It connects into the main that was constructed earlier.
So, oh, I have my.
Good morning. Tom Brown from Duncan City. A question for Rick. Rick, these additional costs and this additional underground utility work, does it also include putting stuff underground to someday add a commercial kitchen to the jail? I know the existing plant has no kitchen. It might make sense to put in water, sewer, who knows even gray water capabilities now if at some point it's decided to add a kitchen to the jail. Thanks.
Go ahead and answer that, Rick.
The way it's configured, yes, you will be able to. I've been specifically thinking about that, so.
Thank you.
So our total match overall has been how much? Remind me again, over two?
Yes, it's been two point one for about three years in total.
And if I heard you correctly, this is included in this? The one.
Most of it is where we take the water line around the top. That will not be, because even though we have to install it to get fire flow to the project, it's construction of a water main, not a water service. And so, but the stuff that's coming over, yes, that's already in the hard match, but we've already met our hard match through the costs with the architect.
Right.
The initial building cost.
All right. So any other questions, board members?
Motion to approve, two dot two seven as presented.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. On favor?
Aye.
Anyone to close? It's carried now, so move. Thank you. Before we start our ten o'clock hearing, we'll take a, I saw that, eight, five minute break. We'll start our ten o'clock hearing at ten thirty. And for those who are waiting on item three point two, which is cancel the public hearing regarding planning file P seventeen dash forty-five mines, as you can see on the agenda, it is canceled, so it will come back at some point. So those who are waiting for that item, we're not discussing it, so as you can see, it was canceled. So I didn't want to see anyone who was sitting around for that to think it was still being discussed. Moving back to three, yeah, go ahead.
Can we clarify that since it's canceled, it would have to be run through the whole public notice again?
Margaret?
It would. I'm just looking, and I think that was the intent all along, just looking at the planning director to make sure that that's.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair and the board supervisors, this time I will be recuse myself from this discussion. I've been waiting for formal advice from FPPC on this item, specifically on this agenda. They've been unable to provide it to me by this time, so.
Okay.
This is three point one.
No, we're doing, I'm just letting.
Let's do three point two.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jimmy.
So everyone, please wait until I can see your light. Okay. So Jeremy's leaving for two seconds, because that's all this item's going to take. That I was just announcing the item is canceled, for those who were sticking around, because there's no discussion about this item. The question came up is, we'll have new noticing, I assume, on this item, and that's all I need to know.
That is correct. There will be new noticing.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Director, Hunter?
That is correct. With the hearing canceled, we would have to do re-noticing when a hearing is scheduled. Jeremy, do anticipate that will be at the planning commission again before the item comes back to the board.
Great. All right. Thank you for that clarification. So I just didn't want people sticking around if that's all they were waiting for. So Supervisor Brown can come back in. That's all. That's okay. That's all. It's a good habit. Thank you, Suzy. I just found words. All right. Moving on to three point one, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution which approves the Community Development Block Grant Program Income Waiver Application Submission, no impact to the general fund, two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars from the Community Development Block Grant Program Income. Good morning, Suzy.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm here again to discuss the Community Development Block Grant Program Income waivers. I've been before you. I think today is the fourth time over the last three months. Last month, excuse me, in September, we came before you to do the public hearing for what they call the seminal phase. Once we did that and sent the paperwork off to the state for the Trinity Center fire apparatus structure, state had us redirect some of our program income funds to cover a part of the budget where Trinity Center had leveraged local contractor dollars, where a contractor had donated in time and materials to the project. State was not in favor of that, and had come back and asked us to use additional program income funds to shore the project up, which in turn means that I have to come before you with a public hearing and resolution. So really, the project itself has not changed from the September approval. However, the dollars were in September, it was a hundred and eleven thousand out of program income. It's now two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars. Which means, leaves about five hundred and fifty thousand in the CDBG program income account right now.
Okay. Thank you. Board member questions? Thank you.
So if they don't use that money because they do have other, if they get the contractor donations, what happens to that extra money?
It goes back into program income.
All right. Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring up that to the board.
I would like to pass three point one as, then, a second.
All right. Please pull the board.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
Yes.
Supervisor Benham?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you, my pleasure.
All right. Moving on to reports and announcements. Four point one, report from the Department of Health, I see Director Tippett.
Yes, National Red Day, I thought it was.
Is it really?
It's true. Yes, it is?
You're right.
I could. The county does the regional transportation plan every five years, the updates. Caltrans has a similar document. It's called the Transportation Comms Assembly Report. And what it is, it's a report where they go in, they analyze the current operations of any particular highway or specific highway, and then they look at it today and future, and they kind of come up with a list of what are the projects we'd like to see on that. Right now, they're doing, and it's a twenty-year plan that gets approved. Right now, they're doing the travel. and they kind of come up with a list of what are the projects we'd like to see on that. Right now, they're doing, and it's a 20-year plan that gets approved. Right now, they're doing the Traffic, uh, Transportation Concept Report for State Highway 3, and I'll be holding two public meetings that I wanted to announce. The first meeting will be on Tuesday, the 12th, at Trinity Center from 5:00 to 6:30, and it's at the community center, which I believe is the I...
The I W, the Oddfellows.
Yeah, the Oddfellows Hall. And then, the second meeting is on Tuesday, the 19th, in Hayfork, at the Hayfork High School, and again, it's at 5:00 to 6:30.
On November 19?
Uh, yes.
That's a board meeting?
But it's in the evening.
Okay.
There's a board meeting in that evening.
Oh.
Yeah. It's in the afternoon.
Okay, well, I'll mention that to Caltrans. But this is a great time to come and add any ideas that you'd have on the state highway system, and they'd really like to hear, so I encourage anybody has anything you want to share, please share.
Thank you.
Rick, could you give me the timing again?
It's 5:00 to 6:30.
Those are the only two public hearings, huh?
Yes.
Is it at the fairgrounds?
Uh, no, it's at the high school.
And on 19th.
Okay. And Rick, thank you again for joining me at the school on some of those traffic issues. Okay, any other department head?
Actually, Suzy.
Oh, Suzy?
I'm going to yield some of my time since you were up to cover a few of the progress she's made in the grants department.
Oh, got it. But I'll need one more.
Thanks, your pleasure.
Okay, two for you.
So, Supervisors, I have been your county grants coordinator for about 11 months now, and I've been asked several times by department heads and community members to talk about some of the grants that we have applied for and where we have been successful and where we have not. So, in front of you is a list of the grants that we have applied for, a little bit about the grant name, the project that the funding is covering, as well as how much we applied for, how much was awarded, and then what department is implementing that grant, funded program. So, in total, to date, we have applied for $10,541,674 in grant funding since the beginning of this year. We've been awarded 2.5 million, and we have currently three projects that have had no determination made on that grant funding as of yet. And the majority of that 10 million that we've applied for falls under Prop 68 funding for parks and rec improvements, a project in Hayfork, and then a project at Loudoun Park. Pretty significant project at Loudoun Park, although I spelled Loudoun Park wrong. Hopefully, by the end of January, we will hear on Prop 68 funding, but to date, 2.5 million has been brought in significantly with the help of all of the departments that I have worked with to define their projects and their programs. I may schmooze them writing and fluff things up, but they do all of the hard work warrant for them, and they're successful programs, we wouldn't have that funding coming into the county. So, I wanted to share a little bit about that. And then, things that we have on the horizon, by the end of this month, I am working with the planning director to submit a grant for what they're calling access to housing, things that we can do here locally to make housing more accessible to our residents. That application is fixed for our county size at 160,000. Behind that, we have whole person care, potential for funding that I'm working with Health and Human Services on, amount of 379,560. At the bottom of that upcoming grant is a CalOES grant. That was already awarded to the county, check showed up about two hours before I heard that it was coming. And then, we're going to be working on, and several of you've heard me speak about this, No Place Like Home Capital Development Project, where we're going to be bringing about 30 units of affordable housing to the county. We have submitted the non-competitive allocation, which was a half a million dollars. We'll be submitting in round three, which will come up in about a year from now, and it's looking like a very promising project. Five sources of funding currently leveraged to support that.
Great question. Thank you. Any questions, board members?
Well done.
Thank you, Suzy. All right, any other department heads? All right, see you.
Yes, the board has asked me to bring back a couple items. One concerning the food bank. We've worked with staff, we have been working close with the personnel of the food bank and going through the revenue available, expenses, review expenses, and it does appear within their, in their allocation for their significant amount of money that we could give a cost of living increase to Jeffrey at this point. I'm not sure the exact amount, their accounting system is less than, than current. It's a, it's a checkbook registry handwritten, so we've been going through, so what we're asking for is actually bank records to make sure that we haven't missed anything, but we're very confident that in the next month or so, we'll be able to request a living wage within the funding that is available currently in the food bank, so we're excited about that. And I think Suzy Culkin's still working very hard on that, she's took a lead on that.
So, I have a quick question. So, you found some money within their accounts?
Balancing their books and doing a true accounting system, it appears that there's adequate funding in their current funding sources, plus we're still going to continue to seek other funding for them.
That was my next question, and we'll some talk about first five money.
Yes, they're still...
That they would have to follow some...
Yes, and if I'm not mistaken, they've already followed, already started to do all the surveys that are required and getting the information, so when we apply next time, it's not promising, but it's showing that we're doing it.
Okay. Great.
And second one is spirit of forming committees. I've, I've put together with staff the criteria and application for the cannabis hearing committee, and that's something that the board, if it works later, we can bring back at a different time and discuss what the staff is recommending.
All right, a report from board members. So, on Wednesday, October 16th, we had our local CAP stakeholders, which is, the Community Action Partnership is a three-county joint effort to access the CBDG monies and some other items. Trinity County has not had a local meeting in quite some time. So, the stakeholders, which also include the affordable housing, No Place Like Home, cash, and other fundings, we all started meeting, and it's, it's not called CAP, but it's a CAP meeting, and so it's called stakeholders. I think Jeremy might be talking about that also. On October 23rd, in Kalusa County, I chaired the three-county CAP. There's been some changes in the way that we have approached it. We, it's right now administrated under the Glenn administration, and we now have a JPA that is going to be able to go after nonprofits, and so in time, we will no longer have the administration of the Glenn over us, it'll go to the JPA, which is all nonprofit. There was also a training and ethics class after that. On October 24th, the Fire Safety Council, and later that night, we had a, in Hayfork, or actually it was the 28th, we had the Living with Wildfire. There is also, just as a PSA, there is a meeting on tomorrow night at the Fire Hall in Douglas City, put on again by RCD and the Fire Safety Council. On the 28th, we started having our Thanksgiving meetings over in Hayfork, it's a community effort. October 28th, we had the mass violence response, and then on the 30th, we had the Dos Rios Continuum of Care Conference Call. There's a lot, as you heard with Suzy, there's just a lot going on. On 11/3, Top of the Grade, it was mentioned earlier, there was a local legal grow. Top of the Grade has met multiple times over the last three years, and they put into place an unbelievable community effort. When the robbers came in, the community had an action plan, shout out to OES. Immediately, there was stay in shelter, code red, people got locked down. The community was not injured in any way, and most importantly, our sheriffs were able to get there, and they could catch the bad guys, and they got the vehicles, and they got all the evidence. I spent some hours on Sunday up there, and I spent the night last night. It's a safe community, it's multicultural, there's farmers and non-farmers, so kudos, especially to that code red. There were a few people that didn't have it, but in response to this was a perfect example. I wish Ed was here, so I got to tell him that last night at the Fire Chief meeting that I went to. So, it was just a performance that was stellar by community, working with law enforcement, farmers and non-farmers. So, that concludes, a real quick update on my National Association of Counties leadership class. I should be getting my dashboard today, but I think I have 107 out of 107, so I just thought I'd re-put that out. Supervisor Grove?
No out-of-county travel, but I will mention that the, we did meet, the airport commission met for the first time or second time in several years, so Rick has held up to his word and started giving that going again.
Fantastic. All right, remember first, the Trinity County Collaborative Group went to South County, I was in your district supervisor, Kevin, with Six Rivers, and truly in the long-awaited first 48 timber project. It's great to see after all these years, this project moving forward, and actually, actually Trinity River Lumber actually made the sale on that project, and some of those other fuels reduction projects. It's a great project in your district with the help, of course, Dan Dills.
Yep.
Right, so, there's a lot of work that goes into it, a lot of patience, so it was great to see this happen. November, I'm sorry, October 18th, Supervisor Brown and I attended NCRP. As chair, I was able to designate the Jimmy Smith Award to my vice chair, Lee Hillman from the Karut Tribe. Again, we talked about the 4 million bond, not bond, it came out of a bond, but $4 million that we, our leadership team, spent many hours in Sacramento trying to bring that back to the region that will still be rolling out on some forestry fuels reduction, fire reduction projects. Also, it is always so great, refreshing to hear the state folks that came to visit us at that meeting, how amazing this group is. It is a group of all walks of life, and they actually check their egos at the door and get work done, and it's amazing to work with an incredible group of people, that I'm proud to be their chair, and have a great leadership team from Lee Hillman, James Gore, and Brandy from down in Sonoma County, among the other seven counties and tribe representation. So, with that, Supervisor Chadwick?
Yep, out-of-county travel, on the 21st of October, I was up in Burney for PSA 2, and later that week, the 24th, I was in Anderson for Nortech. That's my out-of-county travel.
Supervisor Brown?
Let's see here, only out-of-county travel was to the NCRP meeting with you. One of the things I liked hearing at the meeting was that one of the governor's representatives said that they really want to start learning from a lot of the local tribes in the Northwest about what they feel is the best way of approaching the forest management, forest health, and controlled burns. Seems like they're going to be a hot topic, no pun intended. So, that was nice, and on the 16th, attended the community stakeholder meeting, learned some really neat things that we can take advantage of down the line. And on October 16th, attended the Burt Ranch Wildfire Community Plan Meeting, and that was really nice to hear. There's only eight attendees, unfortunately, but we were able to address a lot of the concerns for the Burt Ranch community and learn about the process, the advantages that the WRP brings, such as $2.9 million in the last five years was brought in through this WRP period, yeah. Another thing we discussed were fire air horns, and discussed with Ed Presley the opportunity to have high-range audible air horns for quick fire emergencies around communities. So, we've started looking into some of the models and technology that are out there. Reached out to Todd Corbett here in Weaverville, and they have some issues with their fire horn, and so there seems to be a need, maybe throughout the county, to check on the fire air horns or emergency air horn alert systems that are up and running and ones that could be available to us. And on the 24th, I was invited to sit in on a phone call about, or that was hosted kind of by one of the supervisors from Mendocino County, and it was kind of chaired or directed by a professor at UC Davis that specializes in cooperatives, and kind of how the milk farmers have cooperatives working with each other to sell their milk under one label if there's a mechanism for cannabis growers in the tri-county or northern California counties to kind of approach cooperatives as a mechanism for sharing costs and having more community or group polling, purchasing powers, things like that. So, that was really nice and interesting, there's a lot of ideas out there, things are always happening, and if anyone is interested in any of those things and wants to discuss further with me, please feel free to reach out to me.
All right, you did remind me of something, the collaborative group, that's the group here in this county, has been working on setting up cameras throughout the county on high-peak areas for fire detection. You saw in Sonoma County that some of their cameras were able to detect the concave fire early in the beginning, so that's still a work in progress, and possibly putting cameras on the Forest Service lookout, thank you. What'd you say? Towers, yeah. All right, so moving on to county matters. These items, these non-routine or controversial matters are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the border staff may request an item. What happened? See, I'm just... Ad-hoc. You're right, ad-hoc, okay, my apologies. Well, okay. Thank you, I know why. Commercial cannabis ordinance amendments for status quo, am I, not a, all right. Y'all noticed at the request of last meeting, the retail ad-hoc committee, their work is finished for now, and felt they don't need to meet. That's why it's not listed on this agenda. Number two, the federal lands legislation, anything out of that committee?
Nothing further.
Are you guys checking in if there's anything else needed?
Well, I think Washington's now in a state of impeachment, so, so, right now, I don't hope there's anything that's going to be accomplished in Washington at times.
So, Pastor Chadwick? I'm still waiting on that. I sent a note on that. Yep, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? On DC?
Fun times.
Okay. Moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the border staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Let's see. I might move some stuff up so folks can... That should be a quicker reading one as well. Anyone else from the public wishing to move an item? Staff? Nope? All right. Authorize a step increase for a permanent part-time employee ID number 02391 from G147 slash A to G147 slash B effective November 1st, 2019. Approximate cost of salary benefits per month for administrative clerk, two at A step is $4,028. B step is $4,191. Okay. So is this... This is Shelley.
Good morning. Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So what I just wanted to review is the county code states that for a permanent county employee working one half-time or more, they will advance from A step to B step. And that's within the first six months with a satisfactory evaluation. And that step increase would be 5%. So what happens is for employees who are working less than half-time, they are never entitled to a step increase. So Larry Ferro, our department head from the UC Cooperative Extension, has an employee who's been working for a year and a half for their department, has not had any step increases, and wants to recognize and compensate them for their loyalty and hard work for the county by offering them a step increase to B, which would be a 5% increase.
Got it. All right. Questions from the board?
On the fiscal impact, it tells us the increase, but I'm not sure where these funds are generated from. Is this from UC Davis? Is this general fund and discretionary?
I would have to ask Larry Ferro to step up and answer.
Thank you.
That is his budget?
If you'll be there here.
You could be there. Shelley, consider.
So Chair of Morris Honorable Board, my name's Larry Ferro. I'm the director of Shastan Trinity County Cooperative Extension. It's a partnership under memorandum of understanding between the University of California and Trinity County. And in general, the University of California provides program staff, and Trinity County provides support. The approximate budget, total budget contributed is general fund from Trinity County, total in the neighborhood of $24,000, of which a portion of that is allocated to part-time clerical. And we've had this employee who works approximately 10 hours a week, typically two hours on Tuesday, eight hours on Wednesday. And it just struck me, it's like, well, we're doing these evaluations, but she never gets an increase. And that doesn't seem reasonable to me. And so when you look at the numbers, and I don't know how I would have done it differently than Shelley did, but we show approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for an admin clerk, two at A step at $4,028 and B step at $4,191. I'm assuming that's for a full-time admin that is benefited. And in the case of our employee, she's under 20 hours, or under 20 hours a week. So there is no health and there is no PERS associated with her. Is that, does that kind of help? Okay.
Not all the way. So, okay, so I understand Trinity County General Fund and it's allocated $24,000 as a total budget. Is this going to remain out of that $24,000? Are there going to be additional?
Yes, yes. And there is, I've... That was the question you asked that I never answered.
Yes.
Yes. We've reviewed the budget, and there will be no fiscal impact beyond what is budgeted for our operation this year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Am I excused?
Thank you, Larry.
Motion to approve, 5.2.
Thanks.
All right, I have a motion.
Oh, that's right.
Any other members of public that would like to speak outside of... Nope? Okay. I have a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very none, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Did I do something wrong? Can you say who the second was?
We all three seconded.
I had three seconds. Supervisor Chadwick.
No, I'm back and way out. I did talk out of my mouth. Prove it, if my mouth said something.
Supervisor Brown.
Prove it.
Right? Okay. Thank you. What did I do today? Okay, moving on to 5.1. Point of primary alternate representative to the California State Association of Counties Board of Directors. No fiscal impact, otherwise known as CSAC, so...
Who's our current primary?
I am.
Who's our own place?
My alternate is trustee Supervisor Groves here. And I think we certainly are interested in remaining because I have some leadership positions and...
Yes, ma'am.
So...
That's it.
Keith, are you interested in remaining?
I would do it. It does, I cannot fulfill it as well as I should be able to because it does conflict on occasions with the Trinity River Restoration. But I can also ask Restoration if we can move those dates. But I'm more than willing to keep being the alternate.
Is anybody else interested in dabbling?
Only if it's of interest to the rest of the board, would I be happy to take your position there, Keith. But I found the same thing, and I've already found with a lot of the committees I'm in, I'm having trouble getting to the TR... Yeah.
TMC.
Yeah. I've been missing a lot of those, and I really, that's an important one to me. So I'm hesitant to...
Maybe you guys can work on changing those dates, too.
I think that would be helpful for us.
I go to all of them, but I have no problem with whoever wants to be the alternate. But I would just encourage, even if you're not a representative, because there's so much...
Yeah. Everyone certainly is wanting to. All right. I have the shadow chair here asking if there's a public...
Both sides, both sides are shadowing you today.
All right.
It's really Bobby's job.
Let me hack you up. All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I motion to approve or to nominate Madam Chair Morris to remain as the primary representative of CSAC. And unless Keith decides to...
I would be glad to accept your nomination.
There we go.
And you've got a second over here. You're both stuck doing this.
Thank you both. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Seeing none, so move. Thank you all very much. All right. Moving on to our favorite famous subject. 5.3, discuss the general plan update project. Unknown fiscal impact. Good morning, Kim. Is it the end of this morning?
Good morning. Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. This is a follow-up to, believe it, what we had before on October 16th, where we touched on the demo plan update process, where it was at, where's RFPs, so decided them on the agenda to both discuss. And I did notice I failed to add the discussion or receive direction portion, but if we were able to do that, that would be very helpful. That was the purpose, is to receive direction from the board in the general plan update. What you'd like to see is what you expect. Part of this is just myself being fairly new. I think I'm four months now. But for my benefit as well, I can understand the board's desires with this project.
So I appreciate the list of elements that you've listed here, and there are dates that we've tackled. I think the first thing out of the gate, and I know Supervisor Groves has... We've all been asking, is an RFP to go out on this project. So I think that's probably the first item of discussion that needs to happen before we can tackle any of these elements. But Supervisor Groves, would you like to?
Well, I think we have to give her direction on how we want this to proceed before she can talk about an RFP. If we want to slowly piecemeal them over the next 35 years.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Or if we want to demand that she does it in 12 months. I think that design is then, then we can talk about how she would want to lay out and move forward.
All right. Supervisor Brown?
Do you think it'd be possible to request from staff that you kind of bring to us what you feel is most priority to, that needs to be looked at? And what is realistic with available staffing and time and things like that as far as something realistic to propose to a RFP instead of something that we don't necessarily... Or at least, I don't understand the staffing requirements for such a project. Or things like that.
Yes, that'd be a great idea. I had hoped to have a little bit more developed option before this date, but I was unable to do so. I apologize for that. One thing to consider is that there are certain... Now that we have a list of elements and dates, we are not so far behind. The only element of the mandated seven elements of the general plan by state law that has not been updated, and actually it's two, it's combined, is open space and conservation. But that's still vintage 1973 and has not been touched. The other elements have, and for the public's benefit, if you don't, didn't print out the staff report, I'll just go over those really quick, the elements of the general plan and when they were last updated. Start off with the open space conservation, 1973. That has not been amended, appears to be amended since the general plan in its current form was originally approved. Land use was updated in 2001. That's where it went with the community plans. And rather than the straight land use element covering the whole county, it was the incorporation of community plans for specific areas. Circulation, 2002. So that one's fairly dated. Noise, 2003. Safety element was updated in coordination with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District in 2014. And then the housing element is 2016. However, that is, we're initiating the update process on that. The housing element, again, is the only one of these elements of the general plan that are required, that is mandated by state law to be updated. And you're either on a five-year or eight-year cycle for that housing element. So that is why oftentimes the housing element is the most recently updated document. So coming back to the priorities...
Can I stop you and make a comment here?
Yes.
So to say the land use was done in 2001 is a little disingenuous, and I understand that's when the community plans were done. But the core of the work is still the 1978 version. And there was some updates in the 80s, but there has been no substantial change in that except for the community plans that were added to that 2001.
That's true.
Yes, absolutely correct.
And before...
Were the community plans even added? I know hayfort was not.
I believe Lewiston and...
Okay. So it's not all the community plans even? So it's further behind?
And there were other community plans, such as the North Lake Plan that started and never were finished.
Right.
And there was other stuff that never got completed in that process.
So I had Supervisor Chadwick finally waiting in wait. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yeah, thank you, Director Kim. I'm sure you have thought of many different options as far as what would be, how you see the process the best? Do you see it going out, fall together to someone else? Do you want to have staff in-house? What... I'm sure you have an idea of what your best for Trinity County would be. I would like to hear that.
Sure. The, looking at these dates and the incremental amendments that have happened over time, it is something to consider on the approach, the overall approach. And there's something else to consider, too. So I'll get there, but it's going to take a while. Hopefully not too long. The planning and zoning laws, this is the guidelines are in here for the contents of the general plan, and they're very specific. It kind of lays out some priorities for us regarding changes that are worded as honor before your next housing element. And it so happens, land use element and conservation, open space element in addition to the safety element are, have changes that are required by state law for compliance. Those are really, most of those changes are regarding flood and fire, two issues, resource issues that we deal with everywhere in our county. And so that, if we do look at priorities and incremental approach to updating the general plan and continuing that, there's some priorities set forth. However, looking at the dates and the hodgepodge of dates, if I may use that, really what we would want to achieve is a user-friendly streamlined document that's more effective in reflecting the current vision of our community. And that is consistent. And when you incrementally update general plans and zoning codes, you get everything, you know, things are going in different directions. It's difficult to have everything consistent. And that is the goal of land use policy and state law. You have things internally consistent within the document. All the elements in the general plan documents should be consistent, but also what we call vertical consistency. You start with the general plan, and all the community plans, specific plans, zoning code, any applicable land use policy document must be consistent with the general plan. So I always call that the top dog document. I don't know where I got that thing. Made it up. Maybe I should copyright it. I don't know. But that's the blueprint. That's the big vision of the community. And so by incrementally changing the general plan and elements over time, I think that's the most important thing, is get the consistent document. So I'm mixed on taking a few elements at a time versus the whole document. But getting up to your question, Commissioner Chawick, I, we definitely will need a consultant on board to help. We do not have the staff capacity. Even with a consultant, there needs to be... County staff has to be so involved in the daily project management with a general plan. And that's where on October 16th, I said I'm a little bit uncomfortable starting such a huge commitment for our time and energy and fiscal resources without having the staff capacity really to effectively manage a contract. And we're seeing that, you know, the amount of time it takes to manage, like, an EIR. You know, the commercial cannabis EIR. Yes, we have consultants. They're very capable consultants. However, it's our document, and there's a huge amount of staff input on a daily basis on that document. This is going to be very similar to that, and expected to take years.
Okay, what will allow you to become comfortable? Supervisor Brown seemed to sum it up pretty specifically by saying, you have a book, we have to follow the law.
What do you want us to do? What do you say?
But, you know, what do you...
Got it, yeah. Yeah.
If that, you said that book is very specific.
It is very specific. And in 2017, the Office of Planning and Research, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research also updated their general plan guidelines, which I actually, in my original staff report, had a link to just to understand the enormity of this job. So yes, we're going to need consultants' help. It is our document, and we still... It is our document, and we serve the document. And that's always the fear about having consultants. But I guess at this point, I'm asking for a little bit of time, but that we do, but my recommendation is that we do the entire document at the same time, because we aren't so far behind, and we do need that consistency.
So that, that would make you comfortable?
That would make me comfortable. Ideally, it would be coordinated with the conclusion of the cannabis EIR, just for staff capacity would be my comfort zone. That is a huge project in itself, to have two of those out there would be very difficult.
So I have... You answered the one question, you take it all together.
Uh huh.
Second question, you know, we do have some money sitting in there from the cannabis licensing for this specific purpose. So is there money there that can help you add staff, even consultant-wise, to help you get some of this rolling, at least craft an RFP?
I think it's a great time to start crafting the RFP. I think that is a step we should take now to get that finalized and to, yeah, have a better RFP, so we get the scope of work narrow down, and so we get some interesting consultants knowing this is, this is coming, and, and start the process with the RFP. Be comfortable doing that.
Okay. And assuming some of that money that was set aside for general plan update through the licensing fees that we created...
Correct.
...can help you from a financial standpoint?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Supervisor Groves, I can see you have a question. No?
No, I, I don't know if I have a question. There's, there's time, and there's time. So I was on the planning commission twelve years, and I was promised that we would do it in that twelve years. And I've been on the board for five years, and I've been promised for three of that five, so we're fifteen years, which is not your responsibility, but as a four-months ago it is. The fact is, we are not compliant with the state. Every planning project that comes forward in this county is just one lawsuit away from, from being shut down. The whole county is in dire consequence of having every project shut down in the county. If you're asking me, it's gonna take two months to, you know, find this, that's one thing. I'm not unreasonable on the timing, but even waiting till, till the cannabis is done, is that gonna be done in March? Is that gonna be done in July? We've got two years to get that done. And that's just, that is not acceptable, in my view. I'm one of five here, but I'm done. This has to start the process.
Along with the process, does this keep us from getting certain revenue streams and grants since we're not updated enough to date?
It could. And that, again, hinges on the housing element.
Right.
And the language, I could read a passage, it need be on the language that ties the conservation element, the land use and safety elements to housing element update. It could, hopefully it doesn't, but without having those elements updated and having another housing element update in the works, there is, I haven't seen it yet, but there is possibility where the state says, no, we're not gonna certify your housing element because you're not, you're not in compliance with updating honor before your next housing element language, your other elements that are associated with it.
Yeah, this is almost looking for another jeopardy.
Yeah.
Where Keith, this is putting us in jeopardy, so.
And, and I absolutely concur with both Supervisor Grove's statements. It does need to happen, absolutely.
So I have a quick question for CAO. Certainly Director Hunter walked into a lot of work, a lot of cleanup. Can you work with her and maybe Suzie, hopefully, to look at an RFP on this issue?
For the, for the general plan?
Yeah.
We have a rough draft. If my understanding is right, that Suzie has put together, which is completely quite a while ago, a while ago, as Kim said, hesitant to put it out. But yeah, the RFP is, is a simple portion of the, of the process. We have a, we have a draft that we've completed.
I, I don't know that why we couldn't put it out once it's completed. That too takes a while, so even while you're waiting on the environmental document on the cannabis program, like from a staffing, it could currently roll along with the help of your office and Suzie. And maybe it comes back to us middle of January, if that seems reasonable to you with the help of Admin's Office.
Yes, that seems reasonable to me.
Since it's somewhat in a draft form, it sounds like.
Right, and it's just defining the approach and that scope of work, or would be, even with the draft, those would be the two important, what are we looking for with the consultants?
And if I'm not mistaken, that's gonna come before us anyway, where we can see what you've done, and then we can add or subtract and move forward to have that ball rolling. Does that make sense?
It does.
Supervisor Groves, does that help?
Well, maybe we don't have enough time in a day like today to, to do this. We haven't even broached the subject that we had previously broached, and that's to expand the elements.
For sure.
And they, as has been pointed out, they all do have to be consistent, and of course that makes land use last, and, and I would guess that land use will be a three-year process, because that will make marijuana, cannabis laws like nothing when it comes to personal, public input. But I do have a question that maybe Rick's gonna have to answer, but I'm gonna ask him. So Senator McGuire put you on a bill to somehow get extra monies for counties like us, especially due to the cannabis issue, to get more money for the general plan. It's, it's kind of obvious to me that, that you'll have to have one person in staff, that that's all they do is, is work with the general plan, and then you'll have to have other staff. But are you aware of this, or Rick, can you give us an update if, if Kim doesn't know what that was about, or if that's just dead in the water today?
That's what I don't know.
It was funds contingent upon having adopted housing element that's current, and with the housing element expiring, we weren't able to apply. And so that's one of the reasons why they were trying to rush through the housing element to get it updated to the current again.
And how much money you were thinking of?
It was, it was a lot less than I originally had understood that the Senator was coming out with. I remember recently it seemed to be in the three to, two to three hundred thousand range.
Okay.
And it was really, it was very much focused on infill development or increasing housing within your community.
All right. So in part, it sounds like, Kim, you, you came with some concerns, and they've been addressed. It sounds like that we need to go forward with the RFP, whatever timeframe that allows us, also finish the EIR as quickly as possible. But what I didn't hear addressed was the concerns about staff. I think Supervisor Madam Chair Morris asked if the, the funds that have been collected that were identified for general plan, would that help, is that, is there enough in those funds to help offset staff? And are you looking to increase staff?
We are looking to increase staff, and, and we are working, working with CAO's office on, on funding those positions. I, I do see reorganization of, of the planning and cannabis department at the first year, and so that's kind of involved that overall reorganization that we've been working on. But yes, that, that will help with those costs, and we are working on that.
So, and then Supervisor Finley asked you if you were comfortable, are, are those the three main things, and do you feel comfortable with that direction?
Yes, I do.
Okay. CAO?
Yeah, we are gonna have to work on and identify some new revenue, not existing revenues we have, because we've been skirting around saying, if we do this, we have to pick something that we can't do, because with the current staff we have, if we add more work with the general plan, there's gonna be some, some things that we're not gonna be able to do. So it is gonna hinge on if we can get assistance to, to assist with the, with the general plan, because the current staffing level we have right now would sadly prevent us from doing other required work. So that's kind of what we've been skirting around, is how do we, how do we get the assistance? I mean, we're gonna get a contractor, yes, but as Kim says, it'll take at least a full-time person for two years to, to monitor and, and work this. And the current staffing levels, we just don't have that. So we'll look into the funding we have for the general plan, if we can use some of the fees collected for staffing. So we're gonna have to be a little creative to see how we can, we can, we can do that.
So back to my original point, the fees that we've collected through the cannabis program specifically designated for the general plan update, I, I don't know what that total is at this point, but it's probably a healthy sum.
It is, but I don't think it would cover, I don't think it would cover the, the full price of a consultant at this point, would it?
No.
Could it start the ball rolling?
It could start the ball rolling. But yeah, I think estimate of three years on the land use settlement is, is far on.
Yes, I'd be more happy to, to work with Kim's office and, and work with also Suzie, see if there's other types of funding out there, because that's really what it comes down to. And also figure out what non-mandated services you wish to drop. I'd prefer not to do that.
I understand, and I agree with him, but...
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, in my opinion, that the money that is there is enough to do every element but the land use, probably gets everything set up where the land use can start moving forward.
And that's what we'd love to come back with, is prioritize those, and even make some cost estimates of, of what each one will, will cost. And I think that'd give the board a better idea of what we're looking at in timeframes. So, and then, so did you pick January to come back with that?
I threw out a date of January twenty-first, board meeting. If that, if you guys feel comfortable with that day?
Sure.
To have a draft of the RFP?
RFP, and then maybe prioritize, as Supervisor Grove said, which one could be done under, under the current budget we have?
Is that your request?
Well, everything has to, land use is the end part of this. So things, we can't do everything at once, because it has to be, so you're gonna have to prior, within those, you might as well prioritize the ones. And housing is always a high priority, because there's money involved.
I think that one is already solved, isn't it?
And, and so within that, you're gonna have to have some sort of timeline and what those cost, so yes, they can be prioritized between what's come through.
Yeah, and that's information that would line our P to our timeline and our respective, you know, how this, how this project's gonna look. Also, the EIR for general plan update, so the land use portion and then the EIR, the environmental document, is, usually has a hefty price tag on it as well. We can't forget that component of, of the update project.
Good point. All right, I'm gonna open it up to comments from the public. Veronica Kelly Alves, Douglas City. How does the individual community plans factor into the overall general planned update? There's a DC community plan, there's Lewiston, there are certain communities that have their own, that run concurrent or super C. So how does that factor into everything you're doing?
Great question. Again, the general plan is the overall document, and all community plans need to be consistent with that. So when we do discuss our approach at the land, the land use element, there's gonna be some decisions to make on how to move forward regarding the community plans. So again, general plan is, is the main document, and everything needs to be consistent with that. And so once there are changes made to the land use element, another question comes, are we going to keep all the community plans? Are we gonna keep some of the community plans? Or are we gonna phase community plans out? And that's not something to answer today, but it is a question that needs to be asked, because right now, we have community plans, and as was touched on earlier, where are they? I have a book of community plans in Hayfork's in there. I don't know, was that adopted? Was that, you know, the applicability of these plans? And they're not user-friendly as staff. We will come across things daily, oh, wait a minute, we gotta go check this, and then dig this up, and this community plan, and is, has it been adopted? So it's definitely not a user-friendly approach for limited staff with limited resources to have community plans, but they, they play another role. And is there another way to do that in our land use element? So that's a big question I've had about the land use element in my, my four months here getting to know these, these community plans. Are they a benefit, or are they just make things much harder? That's, like, again, not to answer today, that's something I'll need to know when we talk about the RFP.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Yes.
Hey, Grace from Lewiston. Following this for a while, I mean, back in two thousand and eleven, when the first meetings I attended was on the general plan, and, and the planning department literally wanting a blank check from the county to work on this. And the criteria laid out for there, it's obvious that, it's obvious to anyone that pays attention, that we write our general plan so we can get money begged from the state. So it seems like the state has template that they wanna follow. We should just do what the state wants and get it over with, because that's what we're gonna do anyway. And also this board, and not this board, but boards before you guys were here, except for Supervisor Morris, I mean, you've, you've told the state in your documents that we have the potential to build low-income housing, and a lot of units, and a lot of people are in those units. But you were told at the time, well, you don't have to build them, you have to tell them you have the potential to build them. Well, you've done this to us repeatedly, and suppose the state calls your bluff? Well, here you said you're gonna build these units. And, and you guys keep roping us into things, and you guys never fight for us with the state. You just comply, and you get money, you don't fight the feds for us, and I just worry that, you know, it's kind of like the, the football coach that said, three things can happen when you throw the ball, and two of them are bad. And that just feels like what this is with the general plan, because we've always been messed over. So there's no reason to believe we're not gonna get messed over again. And what are you selling us for this time? Yeah, we're gonna get more grant money for, you know, the mental health and human health services, and blah, 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 they already get millions. So why do we keep selling all of us for those agencies? Because that's basically what it is. And you guys need to go back and look at what you've already promised, because those things are still in play. You're not taking them out, you're adding more in. So you need to know what you already promised before you promise some more and start rewriting stuff. And if you're just gonna bow to the state, just get it over with. Ask them what they want, and just give it to them.
John Brower from Junction City, and a couple of things regarding general plan update. One is, it does need, if, if we are gonna jump into these waters, we really do have to have sufficient staff to properly manage this process. We did not have sufficient staff allocated to manage the cannabis EIR process, and that's one reason it's gotten as messy as it is. To have two of those projects running concurrently would be, I don't know where it would end, likely end multiple lawsuits. The Humboldt County General Plan Update was completed, I wanna say, two years ago, took them seventeen years, I think in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars, and multiple lawsuits. General plan updates these days in California seem to have lots of litigation about their, their SEQA documents, which is another huge area of management, that we need sufficient staff and resources to even start. And to do so without, that would be folly. So I, I encourage you to continue digging deep and try to find some resources for Director Hunter to do this. some resources for Director Hunter to do this properly. And I think running it concurrently with the cannabis EIR is a mistake. I think we should put all of our energy into coming up with a good SEQA document for our cannabis program. It's midstream. It's been going on since 2015. And so I think we should prioritize that. And the prior housing updates, what I've read of them seem to be rubber stamps of the prior four-year update with no changes. They always recommend one new unit of low-income housing. It never gets built. So whatever consultant does get hired, I would like to see them actually come to Trinity County and gather some real data and do a real report. But that requires staff and resources to manage that consultant and a contract. It's a lot of money we're talking about to really do this right. And funds generated from the cannabis fees are a good start, but I think it's just enough to get us in trouble again. And we really need some of these pieces of the puzzle in place, I think, before we step further down this path. I know it's been a frustration of everybody, especially Keith's, but I've been saying this for many years. So it's good we're having a discussion. There's a lot of more global issues to consider as we step down this path. Thank you.
Okay. Two quick things. Obviously, we're not going to start anything soon without an RFP out and accepted. So that's at least within six months away. I mean, if you bring it to us in January, it could get sent back. It goes out for a few months. I mean, it is a six months process just to get that done. So if anyone thinks we're going to start immediately, that's not the intention. And Kim, when do you expect the housing element to come back before us? Because you're in the works of it now, correct?
Right. We're just, yeah, circulating the contract.
I was just trying to get, not to put pressure on you, but.
So ideally, we're coming back early March with, you know, probably early spring.
Got it. Okay.
With the housing element. Has some ideas for a program. In fact, something came up earlier regarding rent control. The housing element is the perfect vehicle to create a policy. I don't know where we're at, but example, housing element and comments received regarding housing elements. And they're a bit unique compared to the other elements. They are very specific and often, you know, John alluded to rubber stamping. And it's almost a necessity with what the state has done with requirements of this document. It's very little local creativity in the housing element like you would see in the land use element or elsewhere on the general plan, very prescribed. So, but one thing is a program to, for the county to look at the feasibility of rent control program. That would be the perfect vehicle for that. And so that would be coming up quick. Again, I hope it won't take long. We do only have two units that are required. And it is, now the county can assist with actual construction of affordable housing projects, but that's, it's usually just focused on making land available, reducing barriers to affordable housing is the intent of the housing element. Jurisdictions have done it. That is the focus of the housing element. Can we do this? Where can it go? And how hard is it to build affordable housing? And that's the focus along with a whole bunch of new housing legislation. So that will take some time, but I'm hoping early spring.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification on the housing element.
Just some clarification, statements made. When the housing element's complete, it does not mandate the county to build low-income housing. What it does, as Kim said, is it reduces barriers and housing and low-income housing needs are based on our census. If we have a negative population, the housing element will come out and say, you don't need it, low-income housing, even though we know we need it. But what it's based on is to create, to reduce barriers so developers can come in and build the low-income housing, not the county itself.
Right. Thank you both for that.
Yeah, also to clarify, when I said two units, those are regional housing needs allocation from the state that we need one very low and one low, which in comparison to some other surrounding counties that have hundreds in those categories, ours is fairly low. So we want to concentrate on where, you know, some other programs and other things that could be done because we don't have a high mandated number that we need to allow for, not build, just allow for, or to show where they just could be built.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Does it seem reasonable that we have a draft RFP mid-January?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Supervisor Grove, anything?
At that time, could we also see some sort of rough draft timing?
I think it has to be included.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So with that, I think that's our first step.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. With that, we will move on to the 5.4. Discussion provide direction to staff on the 2020 Regional Transportation Improvement Program for the 2020 State Transportation,
The STIP is always a plethora of acronyms. It's one that you try to avoid, but you just essentially kind of stuck with them. But the State Transportation Improvement Program is a state-run program. And what they do is they ask us to create a regional transportation improvement program. And once they know what our regional one is, they take that and program it into the state. So every two years, they come out, the CTC comes out with an allotment for the Trinity County Transportation Commission to allocate in the STIP. So what you do is essentially every two years, you go to your RTP, which is your regional transportation plan, and use that to populate projects that you have, that you've been wanting to build. So you populate your RTP with those projects. Also, at the same time, Caltrans will have some projects on the state highway system. And usually, there's components that wouldn't, I'd say, wouldn't play very well out except for inside our county. So sometimes or most times, what we've done in the past is we use about half of our STIP to program projects that are mutually beneficial to the county. In this particular STIP, Caltrans has asked us to participate in some turnouts on 299. And then we've also talked, a lot of the future projects will be left turn lanes onto county roads at different locations. For this year, our new target allocation was $1.3 million, which brought our total programming to about $3.1 million. That's, that has to be spread out over the five-year period. There were some, there's some particular projects that we've had going on for quite a while. One is the Loudon Bridge. And that was, money was programmed for construction in next year. And then the other one that's probably of significance would be the Wildwood Road Rehabilitation Project or Straightening Project that was approved a couple of years back. We have money for design and get us to right away, but we also need to start looking at, eventually looking at construction in the out years. So what we want to do is we want to, if we have opportunities to save some money to program to that, then we have the adequate amount to program that project. We have to kind of go easy in some years and program in later years. And then again, we talked about partnering. Right now, we currently have the partnering at Tom Bell Road for the left turn lane that's going eventually used for the jail and some ways. One of the things that, actually, I'll go over the list. If you go to the last page, there's a chart that's up there. And go down and talk about some of the projects. The first project is the Wildwood Reconstruction. As you know, we have designed money this year and in two years, we have right away. So there is no change there. The big change that we had in this particular STIP was we wanted to take Loudon Park to the senior center bike trail project and move it out two more years to give us some separation from the jail. And that project, just, we're really busy right now. And it would be, create kind of a more even keel workload if we could move that out two years. Then we had the programming in for the Downriver Turn Lane for design help, some right away, and then eventually construction in year four. What we do is we take the new money and we always program it into years four and five.
Supervisor Grove, any questions?
When, I must have missed when Wildwood, are you asking to push that out also or is that a higher priority?
Well, the construction one, I was hoping that we could start programming it this year, but the STIP programming was about half of what it was last time. So.
What's Wildwood Road worth right now, especially in this area?
Wildwood Road is eventually, probably the first phase would be about $6 to $7 million.
It's worth, it's becoming worthless to the county as an asset?
I would not agree with you because that is the parallel route to Highway 3 from 36.
So it's an important route.
And so it's a very important route.
Right. So it should be maintained instead of having a lane this big and rocks falling on the edge that you drive on.
Well, again, ultimately, that I look to you guys for guidance. And if it's a priority, so be. You can rearrange these priorities. It's within your free.
I've just been hearing about Wildwood Road for most of my life sitting here. And it should be taken.
So you want it to stay on, is it staying trapped?
Well, it would be, well, it's not in my district. It's in Supervisor Chadwick's district, but it is a valuable asset as Rick has stated, important asset.
Right now, even, again, with the short STIP allocation in our savings, we do not have enough to program a construction project with this STIP.
But you could save money.
We could say, you could say, we don't want to program anything. We will put it in the bank and save it for next STIP.
And the last time that happened, the state said, oops, no more money.
The state did, two years ago. And they're trying to catch up. Part of the problem was, was in the last STIP, they tried to catch up too fast. And so that's why there's a smaller balance.
Where were we?
For this year. Well, we got our fair share of the allocation. Again, the allocation fortunately comes from what it was before. This is also the allocation that I like, which is.
You're up to the third one. What you, I mean, I understand what you want to do.
Okay. And so we, the project we did add in was the 750 for the Downriver Turnouts.
Which is important.
And those are the three projects that we'll be looking at over the next five years of this.
And Caltrans is adding to some of that turnout since it's their highway?
What it is, it's part of a CAPM project. And there's some monies that are ineligible in those projects, but are still the county would like to see. And turnouts on 299 are not ineligible cost. And so they came to us and asked us if we'd be interested participating because when you have a contractor out there, you always have savings based on scale. And the fact that they're already out there, they've mobilized, they can put down asphalt much cheaper than if I have to remobilize them under separate contracts.
So you're looking at something else to add?
Well, what they're doing is they're doing the overlay project. We're an add-on. The turnouts are an add-on to that. And we're covering the cost of those turnout.
And that will become one of our assets or will it be part of the state?
It will.
I think that's great for slow drivers and fast drivers. Okay.
And STIP, STIP and RSTP, and RCTP, we don't get a whole lot of, but those are really the only two funds that we can use off our county road system or state system. You have, through the counties, you have many jurisdictions. As you know, this is allocated by the, by the Transportation Commission.
Right.
And here in Trinity, the county is the Transportation Commission because we have no unincorporated cities. And where there are incorporated cities, you will find that Caltrans is a very big participant. A lot of times, they take lion's share of the funds. We've been fortunate to be able to use ours for our county road system.
And I thank you for that.
Okay. So what do you need the public comment?
Just that you agree with the schedule that we have on here and that we've followed through with the projects as they are programmed in the new STIP.
Okay. I do have a question from Supervisor Chadwick.
Yeah, I do have a comment that the county could lose some standing with the CTC for failing to turn into RTP. So two questions. Could lose, what is that probability? And if we do lose, what happens?
Well, if you, if you don't, everybody turns in an RTP or RTP every two years. And it is, quite honestly, I can't think of the last time that someone hasn't turned it in. You can turn it in and simply say, I have no program. And what your program, what happens to your program is it goes into unspent shares and becomes available in the next STIP cycle. But if you don't turn anything in, it's kind of like, I don't know, it's just, it's, if it comes in a void, you're essentially enabling the CTC to make your decisions for you. And what will probably most likely happen is they'll say, the way you have it programmed in 2018, that's what we're going to advance into this cycle. So you have programmed projects years one through three and nothing else after that. And then again, we would have Loudon Park Bike Trail the same year we were trying to build the jail, which would be very cumbersome for the department based on what we have available.
All right. Any comments from the public? Please step to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name's Peter Strauss. I live on Sky Ranch Road. In February, I think it was, the culvert was partially washed out. And nothing has been done to repair it. About a quarter bit's gone. All we have is some cones that are stuck there to prevent somebody from going off the edge. When will that be fixed? Mr. Tippett?
We had the FEMA folks out just the other, about two weeks, three weeks ago. And they finally looked over the project. They take that visit back and they go back and they put some numbers and then give us an authorization to do the project. It's an unfortunate thing, but FEMA is, you're dealing with federal government, so you always need to add a year or two to a process of recovery. Our hope is, is that we can possibly do something next summer, but there's no guarantee. But also, I want to also add that that's a very, very, very environmentally sensitive area. And so there's going to be some extra environmental hurdles. And so there's going to be some extra environmental hurdles that we're going to have to cross over to get to that. And then there's been some of the government agencies asking for some betterments on, on passage and some of the things that are going on in that location. So we're working, we're working on it, it's, it's a lot of behind-the-scenes right now, but I, I don't see anything happening until the earliest next summer.
And you heard back from FEMA?
Yeah.
So, so this is a little bit off-topic from this item.
Okay.
And so maybe after you could connect with Rick, because this is a different pot of money.
Well, except it is a safety issue.
Right.
And just having some cones there, and we asked about K-Rail. I mean, it's quite narrow, it's a single lane now, and somebody could go off that culvert quite easily.
So, I don't know whose district that is?
Jeremy.
It is Jeremy.
Jeremy's very helpful.
Okay.
But we do also have one other concern. It is about road repair. And that Trinity Restoration Project has been using that road for their project down there. Greatly impacted it with their heavy loads. In 2017, 600 to 800, according to, heavy loads went down that road. It's allocating severely. They again had another project this year. I mentioned this to Mr. Tippett some, a couple of years ago, he said, great, we have an arrangement to send the bill to them. They keep hopping out on paying the bill.
And I'm really being very generous, because this is a separate topic.
Okay, this is very important.
I agree, I understand that.
So how do we follow up? Because I've talked to Mr....
Yeah, I'll follow up with you after this meeting.
That would be a terrific, thank you. Sorry to bring it, but it's, you know, somebody should pay the bill. Thank you.
If the gentleman would like to agendize something, I have several other topics. Hopefully, I have FEMA projects ahead of you. But Rick, what are you planning on giving us for this year out of these, out of these items?
Well, I'm not doing a public comment here, so, okay.
I have a question about more work on the Wildwood Road. Didn't we at one point take all of our road money and put it towards a mile or so of Wildwood Road? And did that get done? And where was it done? And is it part of one of the projects that's still ongoing? Because I, we did take a little special trip to see the famous Wildwood Bridge, and so I've driven on the Wildwood Road, and it keeps your attention, I will say that. So there, I get that we have a lot of roads in this county, but a lot of these roads are Forest Service, so they're federal, they're state. And I get that nobody, the state doesn't want to take responsibility for their roads when it comes to fixing them, but they will overstep their bounds, and that's why we have two stupid stop signs when we come into town. But somewhere along the line, the county needs to, I don't know, hike up your pants and tell the state, these are your roads, these are the, these are the boundaries for your roads, these are the stipulations for your roads, these are the requirements for your roads, and you need to meet them. And the Forest Service also, we have a lot of Forest Service roads, these are public roads, and they're gated. And these roads were historically used to go from Jaleek Springs over to Wildwood, to go all over the place. We actually used to use the roads, and now they're all gated. And it, and it's you guys letting clothes on. And I know you guys don't think that, but you guys are the boss here, and the Forest Service just manages the land, and when they just put up a gate, they don't get to put up a gate because they say so, because they do it all the time. They'll lock something, and they'll go too bad, sue us. Well, we're just the little peons, you know? You guys are the ones that are supposed to step up, learn what your authority is, and then do it. And I think we could save a lot of money and have better roads, you know, down the southern Trinity. I'm pretty sure the federal government has a lot of responsibility for those roads, and so does the state, and for different reasons. And I know they're not going to just do it, but at least you guys could get in their face about it.
Do you have a specific question on this item besides on the Wildwood Road?
Yeah, all these little, all these things that you're doing, there should be other mechanisms instead of this is our pot of money, we managed to scrounge, and this is where it's going to go. You guys need to find other mechanisms because there's, this isn't going to work. There's way too many roads. And Wildwood Road will disappear with someone on it, and you go, oops. And it, and those are county roads, and people pay taxes, and that's what the money's supposed to go for. I mean, go ask Governor Newsom, he doesn't know why our gas tax are so high, some of that's supposed to be for roads. So, you know, just get in their face a little bit and go, these are your roads, you need to take care of them. Some of them are, some of them aren't.
All right, so, moving back to our handy charts.
Thank you. You know my question?
Yes, so would you receive a question?
No, I just want to know what asphalt we're going to see. Look down. What's your preference, Rick? What's going on?
On, there'd be the asphalt on the state highway system in 2023, and then there'd be the bicycle trail. That would be placed in 2022, 23. So that'd probably be summer of '23. And so those are the two projects, and then we'll get a significant way along with the Wildwood design, where we're hoping to be in construction probably in 2027 to 2020.
Can we assume that Tom Bell is a priority?
Tom Bell is a priority. It's actually, it actually was allocated, it's going through allocation right now and will be under construction. They're looking at starting construction there probably, I believe it's in April. That was, that was an earlier commitment that we had made for that interaction.
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisors.
So the bicycle lane, is that taking monies away from roads?
You can divert those funds to the road system, but we have gone through the environmental phase and the design phase, and they would ask for reimbursement on that if we were to divert that money for roads, and, and right-of-way also.
Right. It's been on the books for a long time.
It's actually a byproduct of the...
Don't say your last coach.
Yeah.
The connector.
Yeah.
So how much have you spent on it so far, following up with what keep this thing worth that we would lose or have to get back?
$330,000. Thirty thousand, sorry.
$30,000?
$330,000.
All right.
Thank you.
Most of that was right-of-way and survey.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
Question to approve the...
The renewed proposal of the system?
In this, you're just providing direction so that we can return next two weeks with...
Okay. Thank you, I apologize, Supervisor Chadwick. So what would, what is the board's pleasure then for direction?
I'll start with getting Tom Bell in.
Are you just looking to have this new proposal move forward that you're proposing?
Well, you're asking, yeah, I apologize.
Thank you. So I'm, what is your question?
I'm just clarifying what John was saying.
Thank you. You too.
So, since Tom Bell is the highest priority, maybe you're standing by his priority list?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you'll come back to us in two weeks with the final?
Yes.
Based on this direction?
Yes, it will be as presented in this table.
Okay. All right, any other questions that suit the board?
For now.
For now, okay. We'll see you in a couple of minutes, Rick. Thank you. All right, so moving on to closed session. I'll read the items, and then we'll take a five-minute break after. 6.1, Government Section Code 549, 54.5, Conference with Legal Counsel, In Sustained Litigation Number of Cases, one. Terrence Moninol versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 19CB106. Item 6.2, Government Code Section 549, 54.5, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. 6.3, Government Code Section 549, 54.5, Conference with Labor Negotiators, County Designated Representatives David Prentice, Sophia Meyer, and Shelley Nelson, Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff Association, Probation Peace Officers, Units, Skilled Trade Units, Management and Competency Unit, and General Unit. Item 6.4, Government Section Code Section 549, 56.8, Conference with Real Property Negotiators, APN Numbers 007-300-24, Agency Negotiators, Rick Tippett, Negotiating Parties, Caltrans, Under Negotiation Price in Terms of Payments. All right, so, I'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll...
On 6.4, I'm assuming this is for the Swift Creek Bridge project?
I don't know. We just leave it as APN numbers, is that correct, counsel?
Correct, you posted as APN numbers. I don't know the answer to that.
I don't either. On your backup?
We own the property, so...
Okay, so with that, we will take a little break.